For height exceptions in OTR and other districts for solar to be five feet above the current limits. But the language for both the screening for that solar, if it's five feet over the height limit, and the alternative compliance language are not really well fleshed out. And really, all I'm here for tonight is to see if there is support with this body to try to develop some way in that language or in the way it's implemented to make this a process that doesn't penalize people who want to do solar and added insulation. Because right now, I think the intense there, but there's no way of really figuring out how that alternative compliance is decided and who does it, because it's very rudimentary in the way it's written.
Thanks, Pat, for coming in. And as our, you know, procedurally, we tend to not act, we try not to act on questions that arise. And I hear and I know the board understands your frustration on that. Some of us, including myself, would beg to differ on how the public process unfolded, but I, after you and I's conversation, I get how that came across to you. So I'm pleased that you're wanting to go to P&amp;Z with alternative compliance language. One of the conversations that this board had as a priority, not the first priority, because the first priority, we wanted to look at temporary housing or some experimental ways to address some of our housing issues in the interim. But then, one of the second priorities that, or, you know, in the top five, was the height issue, not just in OTR, but in a few other zone districts. So I know that that is definitely a priority for this board to undertake. But for us to weigh in and do that outside of that process, we're not going to do that. So I appreciate you putting that on the record. It was explained by our consultant how that made it into the draft, and several staff reports had mentioned that that needed to be fixed. For those of us that were on the board previously, when the infill dilemma, I mean, there's different names for it, back in the 2008 to 2010 range blew up, you know, that's where the height was really an issue. And so, having gone through that, I want to honor those folks that if in OTR, we can raise it. I think we also understand to have a well-built, efficient building, that we might need to look at those height issues. So between when we have adopted the UDC and when it is implemented in May, there might be some room. So it's, you know, I encourage you to go to P&amp;Z and see if the alternative compliance can work. And then also with this board, if we can undertake a conversation on height, just to see if that's able to be worked out.
Yeah, that's plenty fair. And just to also make it clear that I'm not doing this just for my project.
Right.
I think it has bigger implications, and there shouldn't be disincentives built in the code.
Right, understood.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. John?
I'm all for cleaning that table up. It's, it looks silly with 27 feet across the board and that one little line there with all its complications.
No, I understand. I just know that we had our rooms packed, completely packed with people that did not like when we had changed those infill guidelines and saw what was built. And they were very sensitive to the height, and we had tremendous compromise to come back down and have that level reduced. So to honor that process, I wouldn't want to wholesale just have the chart go right across without allowing people the opportunity to know that we're revisiting it. It may be where no one shows up, but I'd much rather alert people to that potential. Because that kind of burned us previously. So, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
So thanks, Pat. Is anyone else present who wants to visit with us that's not here for an agenda item? Okay, trustee comments? I just wanted to remind the board, next week, we have off. Yippee. The 30th will have a very light agenda. We have just some liquor licenses, counts payable, a few minor things. It'll be at our regular time. So if there are any quorum issues, let myself or Jay know, but we want to make sure that that happens. Then the following week, the 6th, there's no meeting. That is the first Wednesday of the month. 13th will be our first regular meeting of the month in April. We'll have a full agenda. One thing that we're trying to work on with Park and Rec is to get the garden issue with Thompson Park in place, and then any other issues that we would have had on the 20th. Because of the change in the election law, we can't canvass the vote till after, till on the 14th. That's the soonest date. So the results will be unofficial on the 5th, but they won't be official till we can canvass that. So the, those leaving the board will leave on the 20th. We get one more meeting out of you guys?
We'll make sure we get paid for that meeting.
Yeah, no.
You have thoroughly discussed the prorata on the multi-meetings in April.
And at the old rate. You don't get the new rate, just because it's April. And then we'll have the new board come in on the 20th. So that's just, to keep that in your vision for the next couple of weeks. Okay? Any other trustee comments? John?
Yes, so the right to rest bill, House Bill 141264, it's not before the House this year. It hasn't been since 2014. And would, should we send that out so you guys can read it and consider it as something that just says that you have the right to your personal body and nobody can feel good about taking your stuff from you? It's a really interesting bill, and it gives the homeless...
So if you're...
It's, people are often relieved of their tents and backpacks and things.
Yeah.
Vagrants.
Not marijuana. Personal possessions.
Personal possessions.
Yeah. John, I think...
It's an interesting bill.
If you can supply us with the background, and we'll add it as part of correspondence for the 30th, like, kind of, just so the public's aware of that. It might be pretty lengthy, and then that might dovetail into our, some of our conversations. Because as you recall, we were talking about this earlier, but to get it on the record about last summer, when we switched our in-town allowance for camping or residing in the right-of-way, we further restricted that. So that's part of that conversation, that if we want to expand that, I think that right to rest legislation would go really nice into whatever agenda item that is, to visit on if we're wanting to allow a little more flexibility.
Nice.
So, yeah, thanks for providing that, John.
And, yeah, the other senior housing group meets every other Thursday down at the Chamber in Glenwood Springs, the old Chamber building. And they've got 22 acres down in Newcastle, the old gravel pit. I guess it's being offered for $800,000. It's a very good value. Newcastle's put $30,000 down on that, I guess, the last meeting. Julie Martin and John Martin were both in attendance, and were very interested in providing support and backing for something like that. And the town of Newcastle's put out an RFP to look for people that are willing to help build and help put this together. So there's some motion there. I thought I'd bring that up with...
Promise to you, Chris. Thanks, John.
And then the senior matters would like to ask you permission to use part of our town grant to help the Roaring Fort brain train get started in July. The grants don't come rolling in until September, actually. So we have a couple of months there that we're going to have to come up with $2,000 a month. We're writing grants like crazy, and we hope to have some. Just wanted to know if the board felt that would be an acceptable thing to use that money for it to come...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'd be open to it. It's not new money, and I don't think we put any constraints when we gave senior matters that grant.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any heartburn, it was more for senior matters and their mission as they saw fit. I know that they had earmarked a few things that they had planned, but if things changed and they prioritized this, I don't think we put any constraints on what we had given other than it went to senior matters.
Yes, the board just wanted to make sure that this board understood that.
And I did send a letter of support for the brain train today, so that I think will hopefully help get that...
So I guess I'm confused. Are you talking about the community request money that they received?
Right.
Which they should have already gotten?
Yes, which we got.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we can just put that towards the...
Oh, okay. You're not talking about the money that we give out in September for the following year?
No.
Okay.
We've already given it out, but we didn't have...
I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
They cashed the check.
Yeah.
It's now more of an internal thing. I think John just wanted our blessing that they may use it for that.
The September date made me think it was in anticipation of receiving another one for the next year.
Yeah.
That's it.
Great. Any other trustee comments? Katrina?
Is there any update on ADA compliance plans in our parks?
I think the most recent update was that Larry did meet with one of the ADA advocates and did a full walkthrough on the parks last week on all the playgrounds and kind of did inventory of it. I don't think there's new equipment ordered at this point, other than what we had included in the budget for last year. But there has been some outreach and kind of the looking what in the field, you know, minor modifications could make things more passable for folks.
And are we looking toward the fall round of mini-grants or whatever for consideration for some of that equipment?
Possibly. We're going to have to prioritize whether that's going to be a mini-grant or more of a full grant, depending on the scale. The Thompson House and the Historical Society would also like to go after a mini-grant for some upgrades to the house, and we're just going to have to get some costs, the $25,000 cap on the mini-grant may not be sufficient to really do what we want on the playground side, but...
So either a smaller one or a bigger one, but we're thinking we're going to do it?
Bigger one, yeah. We're going to have that discussion this summer.
Okay. Thanks, Katrina. For us, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, so had the Chamber meeting this last week, and I wanted to say that Andrew Stewart, who is our Chamber Executive Director, was named the 2015 Mountain Town Emerging Business Leader by the Colorado Small Business, which I thought was fairly prestigious. Had her picture made with Edward Caddena and Betsy Markey of the US Small Business Administration. So it was a pretty good deal for, another good deal for Carbondale. There's an op-ed in Post-Independent today written by one of our former trustees. I don't know if any of you saw it or not, but it's, it's got a, kind of, a lot of errors of omission and some errors of statement in that development that was, did you see it, by any chance?
Yeah, I saw it.
So incorrectly said that the vote was 3-3 to approve the marketplace, so it failed. But he failed to mention that it was approved 4-2 and sent to a public referendum where the public voted it down with a fairly substantial majority. Said that our taxes were, that we've come up with were very uncreative. Implication, of course, being that he would have been much more creative. And he also said that our solar array at the dog park was 50% of the panels were facing in the wrong direction, and we were losing 60% efficiency. I did a quick call to SunSense. They said they don't know where they pulled the 60% number from, but they ran multiple models of those solar panels to be the most efficient they could, considering they needed to use the roof space and didn't want to put all the panels on the ground. So I just wanted to put that out there, if anybody says anything to any of us, so you know that. And so somebody, I think SunSense is a little incensed about that.
Sounds good.
And that's a 60% number, it was just pulled out of the air, apparently, so.
Just a clarification, that's a PPA. At the current thing, we just pay for the energy that's produced down there.
Right.
There will be a buyout down the line, but right now, it's what it's being produced. So if the panels aren't producing at full capacity, we're not paying for it.
Yeah. I don't think staff or any of us were consulted on fact-checking. I mean, it is the Carbondale Nature Park, you know, to be more specific, but maybe there's a word count issue to not elaborate on some of the other points. But thanks, Rusty. So I saw, I think I saw AJ's hand up first, and then we'll skip Ellen, go to Pam, and then Alan.
Well, I'd say I'd encourage you right there, Larry, the editor correcting all that. I mean, that's probably the most effective.
Yeah, and I'm, that's a good idea, and I'm thinking about that.
And copy the author.
I just wrote one today, so I'm...
Just use some flowery, flowery language to make it more creative, maybe.
I'll do it.
Okay, thanks, Rusty. AJ, sorry?
Along those same lines, just want to encourage trustees. I'm also going to reach out to Core and the E-Board to really keep pushing why we're we put 2A to the voters. And it seems like the biggest pushback is not a clear vision or specific goals, and just a lack of misunderstanding about what's going on. So make sure that all of us are spreading the word on the importance of that, and that there is oversight with specific amplifications of upgrading 400 income-qualified homes, upgrading town solar, and things like that, so.
Yeah. And we also need to be cognizant of our role and where we can weigh in on an official basis and where we weigh in as individuals, which I know Mark has briefed us on in the past. More to your point, last night at the squirm night, one of the comments was, how come it wasn't more outlined in the Tabor notices? There's a clear line of what we can and can't put in as a board in those notices. So once we set the ballot, the best thing we can do is do a resolution of support. Aside from that, it's all individual, on our own time, not using town resources if we want to support it or not. So like, you know, letters to the editor, op-eds, those are all fine. It's just, we have to be mindful that our role as this body is very different once it goes on the ballot. And I explained that to a few people in the audience, because they didn't understand that, that point. So, and that's why there's not active campaign information on our website, that there's a separate campaign committee that's working within the community. So, thanks, AJ. Pam?
To follow up with Katrina, I noticed that swing had not been moved in Sopras Park. The universal access swing had not been flipped. It's face, it was installed so that the child faces the brown building for the Forest Service instead of the playground in the park.
Okay.
And Larry was going to change its orientation and move it down so that if a parent had more than one child, they could be pushing more than one child in a swing at a time.
Okay, I'll check on that. I wasn't aware of.
Thanks.
I hadn't heard that one.
Okay, Pam. Alan, you had a hand up?
So speaking of Delaney slash Carbondale Nature Park and playgrounds, I had a suggestion from a mother of a five-year-old who's also a dog owner, to put a playground down there because parents cannot get their kids to go down there. It's pretty boring to walk in a circle with a little kid, even if you're a dog owner. So it would be a way for parents to have their kids be able to play and then take their dogs on a walk.
Thanks, Alan.
I think that's a good...
I'll talk to Parks and Rec Commission on that.
Yeah, I think, I was just going to mention that, AJ, because when the archery folks came through, they went through the channels and worked with Park and Rec to say what their plan was, what the implementation would be, and then went through those channels. So if AJ, if you can take that forward to Park and Rec, that'd be great.
As you said, by doing that, it may put relief on Sopras Park and other playgrounds where people tend to break the dog rules because their kids are...
Great. Well, we'll discuss it. Thanks, Alan. Other hands I saw, John, you had a hand?
Yeah, just the thought of the income qualification for solar programs. There's a lot of seniors that have been working all their life, and they've just retired, and their mindset doesn't tell them that they're able to qualify for programs like that. So if you're talking to some old farts and about the tax, or the fees on their utility bills, you might remind them that they may be eligible for those programs now.
Great, thanks, John. And ballots have been received, or they're out in the mail, so I encourage folks to vote. I will be brief, but John and I did attend our RFTA meeting on last Thursday. There's been a little bit of press on that. The integrated transit plan, initially the study, for lack of a better term, kind of a master plan for RFTA for the near future, similarly to when they embarked on BRT, has gotten approval for its first phase, envisioned with the, there was an RFQ process for the consultant that was hired, and it looks like this study could, once it's all said and done, could reach about $1 million. There isn't, you know, there's definitely support from the board on trying to figure some of these things out, because it's currently, in my view, somewhat piecemeal, based on, do we expand RFTA or do we enhance services? And so we're getting a lot of push and pull from development pressures and other entities of, we need to expand our services here internally in Carbondale. We wanted to expand our circulator system, and, you know, how does that work into that bigger, bigger model? We will be having to keep on top of this moving forward, but the first phase is something that we really need to undertake to know, you know, how we go to the voters. It's not if, it's when RFTA will go to the voters, because the capital replacement and some of the things that are needed, the finances don't work out. They don't pencil. So when we discussed this on Thursday, we had, at that point, no longer had a quorum, so it was more informational. So I just wanted to let you all know that, and we will need, with John being term-limited, a pretty active alternate for that board to make sure that we're on it. I mean, in an organization as large as RFTA, that study does make a lot of sense. However, some of us have pushed to have it be more transparent with meetings being televised and recorded, meetings being in the evening, so we can encourage more public participation, and that hasn't happened yet. So we'll keep working on those items. But just in case you caught that in the papers, that was the deal. Katrina?
Did they have anything to say about bringing the circulator over to the senior housing?
We're working, the RFTA staff's working on that internally, about seeing if we can shift our current route. So that's still in process. And then we'll have to have some conversation on what that means. Similarly, with the potential city market configuration for where we would like to see the circulator go. So that's still going. But as far as expanding, and that may be where the senior housing thing happens, is we would have to dedicate some funding to that as the current model is. So RFTA's been a really good partner, especially staff, for looking at creative approaches to be within our backbone and what's required, going after grants for a different vehicle than what we currently have. So we're in process. It's just, they also want to be mindful that if we expand and it gets into a situation where then, what do we do with, for Basalt? What do we do with Ride Glenwood? What do we do with the SkiCo service? Because those are all different, funded differently, and, or not funded at all.
So they, so is there a timetable for, as they're looking at altering the circulator service?
I'll have to look, that was in the last CEO report, so I'll have to look at that to see where that, because they always give an update of some of the projects, and it just said staff is still looking into it. So I can get a more, you know, more feedback on where that particular item is.
Yeah, it, you know, of the people living in our senior housing, it was definitely the foremost concern that I heard from them, and that was, there's, a lot of time has passed since then, so I would love to go back to them and say, you know, people are caring about this.
Yeah, and one of the things that I know RFTA staff is even looking at is if they're, during certain times of the day, off-peak time, maybe, to do a loop or two. So there's, I mean, they're really looking at how to make that work.
That's great.
Okay. Hold on, Patrick, we're not looking at public comment right now. Any other trustee comments? Mark, do you have anything for the attorney's report?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is an environmental board annual check-in. See a lot of members here. Thanks for coming, guys. Julia, are you, you're our chair, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if you all want to come up, or Julia, if you're coming up, or how we're...
Me and Jake.
That's fine, that works.
I'm close enough.
I've tried that before, it doesn't work.
And what's interesting, we have kind of a hybrid meeting, so to speak, because we needed to make it a special meeting. Usually, we have our annual check-ins during work sessions. And so you're one of the first advisory commissions that we've had come in this year to look at what we all, what you all did in conjunction with our help last year, and what we're looking at for this year. So this is a great time to have that annual check-in. Obviously, we have nameplates at all of our places, but for those of you that are here for the E-Board, if you could introduce yourselves, that would be helpful, not just for some of the board members that may not, you know, we don't remember things from year to year sometimes, or, you know, for members of the public and press that are present. So Julia, go ahead.
Okay, Julia Farwell, Chairman of the E-Board.
Jason White with E-Board.
You all know me, Mark Lamara. That's the answer. Patrick Connerback here.
Great.
Scott.
Scott Mills.
Thanks, Scott. Is that it? Okay, great. So you had, and AJ is our rep, right? Still? Okay. Just wanted to be sure on that. We did get your packet material, and I know AJ forwarded a few items as well onto us. So let's look at last year with the 2015 accomplishments. Any highlights or things you wanted to know? I mean, we did get the packet material, and so, you know, it's always helpful. Many of us coming from volunteer boards to this spot many times, when you put it on paper, it's pretty remarkable what our folks do. And there's always a long list of things that we still want to accomplish, but this was very helpful to get into some of the details. So I don't know if there are a few finer points that you guys wanted to mention?
I would, I guess, I mean, it's all, it's all there, but I guess, just a lot done on the waste front. I mean, turning spring cleanup into waste diversion, spring clean and waste diversion day.
Yeah.
And then emphasizing waste diversion again at the household hazardous waste day, using bag fee funds to fund those events, or portions of those events, I would have to say would be a pretty big highlight. And then all the work that was done on the ordinance, on the waste hauler ordinance, that, I mean, it didn't go through, but still, a lot of work went into, a lot of work and time on Jason's part went into that, and that's a pretty big highlight. Also, a shift in the way leaf days were handled was pretty awesome, too, to have the leaves really stay local and go to a local farm to be used. And that did save the town $400 in savings, and, you know, not to mention, I couldn't find a greenhouse gas calculator on that. I mean, at some point, I'm sure something will come across my way, because I wanted to put that in there. But yeah, I mean, the leaves stayed local. They were like taken five miles outside of town, so saved money in greenhouse gas emissions.
No, and that's right. And so, you know, as far as the spring cleanup and the hazardous waste days, some of the waste diversion things, I, I mean, board members may have other comments as well, but I heard a lot of positive feedback. My household took part of both, in both events, and it seems like a very positive shift. Is there any lesson, are there any lessons learned from last year, or things, or this is just the new model and super supportive of it? I mean, that's more the highlights, we get it, but I didn't know if there's anything that we need to visit about.
Yeah, you'll get all the details in your packet on, for this coming one, on the 30th. So it's going to be a repeat of that. I mean, you know, there were some lessons learned, there were some issues with traffic, and so chances are, it'll be behind Town Hall. Some of it will be behind Town Hall. None of it will be kind of out on the, in the way, kind of how it was, you know, wasn't really in the way. There was just issues with traffic. That was a lesson learned. So we'll just, people were stopping where they shouldn't have. So everything will either be in a lot, you know, in the dirt lot or behind Town Hall. And we're, you'll see in your packet, the name is going to be now, waste diversion and spring cleanup, instead of spring cleanup and waste diversion. And, and there were, I mean, yeah, there were definitely some lessons learned. If you notice on the sheet, like, for example, the, I know I noted it somewhere, that the tires were taken to be shredded and used as alternative daily landfill cover at Garfield County, whereas they were promised they were going to be taken somewhere else. And this year, I'm holding the, well, me and Public Works were working together to hold the haulers accountable, because it's, there were two promises made to me last year, and they weren't followed through on. One was about the tires, and the other one was about the organic materials. They were supposed to be delivered to, or taken to South Canyon, or Picking County. Their facility is certified by the US Composting Council, and I was given a verbal yes, we will. And when I went through and did a follow-up after the event with all the vendors, and just to make sure where they promised me was going to be taken, you know, that was going to be taken. So this year, the tires are going to be taken to GeoCycle, which is a waste-to-fuel facility that also uses the leftover ash in concrete making. I had Core research that. I mean, it sounds like a little kind of scary, like waste-to-fuel, but it checked out, and the E-Board approved of them going there. But I'm going to ask for like bills of lading in the case of the, where the organic material's going to be taken. Last year, it was taken to South Canyon, and they use that kind of material to sop up the septage, and it, basically, because they take pot-to-potty waste there, it gets turned into alternative daily landfill cover, and they do sell some of their compost, but it's not certified by the US Composting Council. This year, thanks to Jay, I got to be a part of the RFP writing process, which was kind of fun, and Jason helped me that with that, and then we submitted it to Lori, and she put her final approval on it. And so they have to sign a letter of agreement with the town. Right now, we got the bids in, ultimately, it's the town that's deciding who's going to get that. And we're, they're going to have to provide me with way tickets, so, but, yeah.
They'll have to answer to you if they don't do it right.
Right, and if they don't do it... Right. And if they don't do them right, then they don't get to play next year.
Nice.
So, yeah, there were some really good lessons, is to not just take what people say they're going to do, and to really, to hold them accountable. So we're hoping that, you know, it's between...
I don't think you should talk about the bids.
Okay, okay. But anyway, yeah, that was a good lesson. And we hope to put a greater emphasis, get some good information out there on recycling, because there's a lot of myths out there. So we hope to really further the, you know, the educational booths this year and displays, to really make it, further the waste diversion efforts.
Great. Want to talk about highlight-wise?
Yeah, I think the, as kind of part of the spring waste diversion day in 2015, Lucy with Core and Julia worked on this, the Royan Fork Valley Recycling Guide. And it's bilingual, and I think it was a really great product. And there are hard copies around at different places around town, and throughout the valley. And then it's also on a couple of different websites. So I thought that was a really good product that kind of tries to bring a lot of the information to one spot. And in general, the collaboration between Public Works and the E-Board on those two events that Julia mentioned, just the overall collaboration, I thought, was really positive. And, you know, kind of taking some of the bag fee funds and putting them back into the town. And we tried to put that into materials and talk about that as much as possible, so that citizens can see that that money is getting used to subsidize other waste diversion, you know, efforts. And obviously, with the bag fee funds, there's only specific things that we can recommend to use those funds are. And I think that these are great examples of that, especially with the electronic waste, because I think a lot of people just have boxes of it in their shed, and they don't really know what to do with it. And we had subsidized up to 20,000 pounds, if you're a Carbondale citizen. And I think we met that quota by 10 o'clock in the morning on waste diversion day. So, of course, you know, there were some huge TVs that weighed maybe 1,000 pounds each. But anyway, I thought that was really positive. And then we noticed that in the fall event, that we once again subsidized that with bag fee funds, there was considerable less amount of e-waste. And our intuition was because everyone got rid of it in the spring. So I think that, just overall, I just wanted to point out that collaboration was great, between the two entities.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Hold that thought for just a second. Mark, you had a hand up about the spring, was it about the spring cleanup?
Well, it was, it was more of a little statement that I wanted to make, that, you know, the environmental board has worked with the energy plan and a lot of different plans that the town is, we're starting to really dovetail. I think it's really starting to show. I know the effect of what the environmental board has done historically, and what utilities has looked at for the energy plan, and some of the composting, and some of the different things that we've worked with in the past three to five years, that it's all starting to come together. We don't know what the end result looks like yet, but it's a constant, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. Yeah, that's the way to go. And we're still working on it. And part of the, just to take the sludge process, I mean, that's been a huge bump, as far as the energy and the solar gardens, and just how we're looking at a lot of that stuff. It all ties together. And I think it sets a good example for the community as well as about.
Thanks, Mark.
I just had one more thing to add. I think Public Works has been great. I think we've educated them a bit. Jason worked with them on arranging the leaf pickup. And I just think the cooperation is, I mean, at first, you know, it was kind of like, what are they doing? But I think now, it's just, it's a great collaboration. I mean, I've really enjoyed working with them down there. And we're becoming more and more on the same page, I feel, or at least there's like an understanding.
Thanks, Julia. Scott, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just had to invite you to come out in the afternoon and just see the sheer bulk. It was amazing. I mean, they were taking van truckloads out, large drop-off trash, just full of stuff. And they were recycling like bicycles and things, people were pulling them off to the side. It really is something you can be proud of, because it was really done well, and there's a lot of stuff that came through.
Yeah, it's interesting. Our model's very different than some of our neighboring communities. And I know from time to time, especially with newer residents, I'll get asked, and maybe some of the board does as well, about, well, how come we don't just put it in the street or in the alley like such-and-such community? And I remind them that we have these programs in place, but there are certain constraints that we have as far as our resources. And from my participation in it over the years, it has greatly improved. And a lot of that is a testament to not just our staff being flexible in that regard, but you all. And just even the costumes, it was a very festive day, and it was pretty cool to be a part of. And so when you have an active, passionate board, such as yourselves, that want to see this event be successful, a lot of this, I think, is a no-brainer for many of us, because we're supportive, the resources are there, especially with diverting some of those bag fees in place. It makes a lot of sense, so that when we're at City Market and having someone chew our skin about, you know, the fee, we can say, well, this is what it goes to. This is what it helps. And last year was a very positive year. So I know that this board is very appreciative, and is the community, because if you miss the day, that's a bummer. If you're, have other things, track meet somewhere, baseball, or you, God forbid, you take a vacation elsewhere. But the overall goal, I mean, to see that amount of stuff, and the loaders and the machinery that's needed to remove the stuff is amazing. So you guys are doing great work. So Scott, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thanks. I hope to do a better job this year as well, once you guys approve my plan. And perhaps getting little flyers available at City Market checkout stands, you know, just like of the ad that's usually in the paper, the quarter-page ad, you know, print like four to a page, cut them out, and then just have, like, them at the checkout stands, so that the checkers for the month prior, because the event is the 30th this year. And you guys will hopefully approve my plan the 30th of this month. You know, just to have a month's worth of, you know, information out there. Please come, please take advantage of this. You know, just getting that message out a little better would be another learning thing.
Thanks, Julia. Jason, did you have anything you wanted to add?
For 2015?
Well, just in, yeah, for that move in.
Yeah, we also had another successful Dandelion Day. And that is something that we'll talk about here in a moment of moving on into 2016. But it's, it just keeps getting a little better each year. And it's gotten to a level of where it's blown up quite a bit. And so there's going to be some discussion on, you know, do we need to scale it back a little bit to make it more manageable? As you guys know, the E-Board kind of, you know, came up with Dandelion Day maybe 15, 18 years ago. And it started out very, very small and quaint with like garage sale, people bringing their tarps to the park and throw out your garage sale stuff. And then some people would come and bring plant starts from their own garden, like around, you know, noon. And, but it was an awareness of, you know, the environment and different things. And I think it's a really great day for Carbondale. It's unique. And it's gotten to have a little bit more of a festival feel, you know, with the beer garden. And frankly, the beer garden is what makes it financially sustainable. And the music is expensive. And so to provide, you know, these amenities, it's kind of this interesting discussion of, well, how much stuff should we provide? And then we have to offset that and pay for that. But overall, I thought that it was yet another great day in the park, on Mother's Day of 2015. And like I said, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment for 2016.
Great. Any other comments on the 2015 from you guys, as far as board comments? Any particulars with 2015 that we wanted to note? John?
Couple of things. When is Dandelion Day this year?
Mother's Day weekend, again, so it's May, Saturday, May 7th, I believe?
7th. And the Weed Board will be bringing a Noxious Weed Management Guide to your board here pretty soon. We've pretty much got all the language in place, one more meeting to close it up. And we'll be bringing that to you for your consideration. We'll also be asking, it's been, like you say, 15, 18 years since the town sort of declared itself a dandelion-hugging town. And if we want to take that one step farther, and perhaps declare the town noxious, toxin-free. So it, just something to think about. We'll be bringing that to you fairly soon.
Thanks, John. Alan, you had a hand up?
So how much is in the bag fee?
Oh, I can't remember off the top of my head.
We've spent it down some. I think, what, on an annual basis, it's about 13,000 we brought in. There was a little bit of a fund balance on that, which we spent down over the last year and a half. So I think in this year, we'd budgeted for 13,000 in expenditures for the bag.
People are still buying that many bags?
It's pretty, it's pretty static.
Never bought one.
On the sales, you know, I don't have that graph handy. We put it in kind of the annual report for you on how it fluctuates. Certain seasons, we see a spike, summertime, when there's some more visitors in town, you see a little spike. Hunting season, in some cases, we see a little spike in sales. But it's not, it's not going up, that's for sure.
I have the current balance, because it's in my memo that I'm writing to you guys to put in your packet. And this is as of February 29th, or 22nd, 21st or 22nd, $33,433.39.
Wow.
That's a lot of bags.
That's a lot of bags.
Go back and double-check, because I started writing this, and I'll double-check my, the ledger that was brought to the last meeting, but I'm pretty sure it's...
Did you have a follow-up to that, Alan?
I did. I think you guys have been spending it well, so I'd encourage you to continue to do that responsibly. I kind of see the, you put kind of money, look at money as energy, and it's the energy to these projects, and they can blossom and be done correctly. The other thing is, I like the recycling info. More is better. I mean, you talk to people who work in waste haulers, and they're like, oh, if you don't take that little ring off the plastic bottle, and get all of the, all of the labeling off, they just, it's just garbage. It ruins the whole thing. I've heard that, I've heard that a couple of times from waste haulers. So I would, I would kind of think, you know, there's probably a myths kind of thing, you know, out there to kind of think about, and really help...
Are you thinking of a Mythbusters E-Board edition? Mythbusters E-Board edition?
Mythbusters edition. I mean, trying to get the whole label off, you can't get it off some of those like soda bottles.
You know, they go through, as far as I understand, as they, the plastic bottles, they go through a shredder. And then, you know, the high-density and the low-density, they separate, and other bits, they separate out in the water, and you can skim off the lighter stuff. And, like, the caps and the little ring that are lower. It's actually better if you keep the cap on than take it off, because if you leave it on, it'll get, it'll mess up the automated machinery called Murphs. So just leave it all on there, and just throw it in your bin. That's fine.
I appreciate it.
Okay, not to get too far in the weeds, but, I mean, that's helpful info. But thanks, Alan, for your comments. Katrina?
I just wanted to say you guys have been doing an amazing job. And I really think that the whole community benefits, and that you are actually taking actions and creating programs that are making our community more sustainable and aware and conscientious, continuing that progression forward. And I really appreciate it. The waste diversion has been awesome. Dandelion Day is my favorite. And I just really appreciate everything you've done. You know, you put a lot of work and a lot of time, and every community should be so lucky to have a crew like you working on this. So thank you.
Thanks, Katrina. So wrapping up 2015, any other comments on last year, what's in the rearview? Now, for next year, it's very helpful what you've provided in the plan already, and a lot of ambitious things. And knowing that some things, depending on other outside forces, will get done more expediently, and others that may roll into 2017, we recognize that. But if you want to talk about Dandelion Day this year, moving forward, some of the thoughts that the board has had, and then any other items that you wanted to have some clarification on, or see if there's, you know, support. I know we'll bring up the single-use plastic bottle issue as well. But if you want to start maybe with Dandelion Day?
Sure, I'll speak to that. So where Dandelion Day starts, or where it stands right now, is there's a group of four ladies that kind of took on expanding Dandelion Day to what it is now, with more of the festival idea. And the vendors have to check in with the coordinator, and then they pay the fees. And there's a certain amount of awareness out of the type of vendors that are accepted at Dandelion Day. And it's gotten to a level where that these four or five instrumental people that are running it are getting kind of burnt out, just from a volunteer perspective. And so they're kind of saying that this is, this might be their last year. And so it's this, this position that the E-Board's in, where we used to kind of, you know, run Dandelion Day, and all the E-Board members would show up, and it was manageable. But it's gotten to a level now to where it's not quite as manageable. And it's a great event from the outside, but when you actually look at all the people hours it takes to put it together, and all the coordination, it's significant. So we, as the E-Board, have been meeting with this Dandelion Day Committee, I guess you could call it, and trying to come up with some ideas of how they could maybe get a grant, or reorganize themselves into a 501(c)(3), or some way to where then they could maybe come ask for money from the town. Because we realize that it's yet another cool volunteer-ran festival that the town has, that town has Potato Days, and, you know, Mountain Fair, and the list goes on with events. And all the other people aren't getting money from the town to run these events necessarily. So we don't want this to get special favor. But we do think it's a really cool event, and it's kind of in this transition time. And we'd hate to see it get scaled back dramatically, because then I think the public would maybe just lose interest in it. It also, on the flip side, could be looked at as if it does get scaled back, then it'll bring attention to that. It really takes real people to run it, and time and money, and then maybe more people will step up. So there are still meetings happening. The Dandelion Day Committee has been meeting for a while already to get this going. And we're trying to come up with some creative ways to, you know, have an event, and maybe it's scaled back to more of an Action and Awareness Day, and maybe a little less of the festival atmosphere. And whether it be river cleanup, or, you know, trash cleanup around town, or whatever, to try to reorient as to where it needs to go next. So I think that the Dandelion Day Committee, they might be approaching the Board of Trustees sometime in 2016 to expand the discussion around it, and see what, there could be some creative solutions.
Thanks, Jason. Yeah, and we encountered this more recently with Potato Day, that handoff. And there was a subcommittee that was formed. I served on it, or went at least to a meeting or two on kind of who's taking it on next, not necessarily the town, because it's not the, I mean, it's a day and festival. It's the longest-running festival, and one of the longer-running festivals in the state, actually. But with Dandelion Day, I think a very similar thing may occur. I'm glad that this group is still meeting, because I didn't know after last year. I mean, it was a very successful event. I think we all appreciate that day. And it kind of kicks off, besides Five Points being our indoor spring event, Dandelion Day seems to kick off our season, so to speak, in a very positive way. And if there's an ability this year at that event to let people know, you know, whether it be what it takes to put this on, I think any of us that volunteer, in any capacity, understand the burnout factor, and what it means. And are there opportunities for partnerships, whether it be like-minded individuals, whether it be a nonprofit to help with the umbrella under it? Or would, you know, is the group wanting to look for other sponsors? And visit on some of those pieces, and then come to us with some suggestions? Because I think that's where the board would maybe push first to say, well, you know, what are we looking at? Because if it is scaled back, I mean, we do have events that run their course, and then they either morph into something else, or they're gone. And it's really what the community wants to do. And we recognize that it's not something that we can just give people stipend for putting on this event, because it's not really a town event. We saw, we've seen other events go, just, they had run their course. I don't think Dandelion Day necessarily is running its course, but it may be a different, a different event potentially. Alan?
So I used to be the rep to the E-Board, and it was stressful four years ago for this board. I mean, I think, you know, I'm hearing you say, thinking of handing it off, it felt like they were handing it off four years ago. I mean, that seems to be an annual conversation, almost. I think the, my feeling is it just doesn't need to become, you know, a massive event. It just doesn't need to be that. It's such a local thing. It's such a local celebration. Any Carbondale coming together, it kind of celebrates the beginning of a regular summer. And then, and a chance to get some information out there. So I'd encourage you, trying to kind of find that right balance. You know, the music, and you got to pay for the music. And then what's the next thing that you're going to do that you need to pay for? The vendors. And then you've got vendor demand to get in there, and it expands out, and then it becomes, it feels like, you know, the... there, and it expands out, and then it becomes, it feels like, you know, the non-fair, or something like, you know, I just, I don't think we want to get there, I think there's a kind of a, a grassroots kind of naturalness feeling here, so I would just encourage you to speak with that board of, you know, those volunteers, to find that right balance.
Thanks, Alan, other thoughts on Dandelion Day? I mean, I know we're all supportive and understand the constraints, but I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on next steps. Katrina?
Yeah, I love the sponsor idea, I think is a really good call, and also, you know, maybe check in about what is a part of generates the money that comes out of Mountain Fair that supports Mountain Fair, you know, they, the way they run the beer tent, and what they get from the vendors in addition to the vendor fees, and, you know, because there are staff positions that have to be paid, you know, that's, it's a different scale, but I actually think there is a way for what is being sold at the fair, I mean, there's a lot of money that gets spent at Dandelion Day, even though they're just little organic plants, you know, and so I think that there is a way for some funding to come out of that, and, you know, just let that crew know that we really appreciate them, and, you know, I think there is a way for it to be independently viable, so, good work.
Thanks, Katrina, any other thoughts on Dandelion Day? And we get it, and we understand that with the E-Board, you're all volunteers, you're all, and you also have your focus points of, this is what I want to give my, my time to on certain things, so let us know, I mean, we get it, and I think that if it's a choice for the community, and maybe some of that information we put out there, that do you want it to stay what it's grown into, or do you want to see it retooled, or do you want to be part of putting this on? Or are there opportunities from like-minded individuals to say, there is a need? Because I serve on the Third Street Center Board, people assume the town pays for that, and that those nonprofits thrive because the town writes a check, we don't, and so they have to do their own fundraising. People may assume that Dandelion Day, town just, we supply it, and it's all there, so I think we might be surprised at if what people want to do, so.
I think we're going to write a letter in the SoCal Sun, there, we, that committee wrote a letter last year, and they were able to get a handful of volunteers by just the awareness, so I think our education and outreach folks of the E-Board are going to write a letter in the SoCal Sun to try to, you know, get some attention to it.
Great, that's good. Other 2016 topics that you wanted to have some clarification on, or?
Well, since there isn't a Household Hazardous Waste Day, because that's every two years, we still want to do an Eco Learning Day.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and Scott wants to bring in somebody, Corbert Lunsford, for that, we want, we still want to do like, some kind of an event, and this zero enter, insulation, right?
Right, Corbert Lunsford, he's an educator and a YouTube video person, and he's based on getting people to understand what energy efficiency actually looks like in a house, how it's done, so he's built a small trailer house that he takes around, and so he's going to be coming here in the fall, and he brings it in, and he has, he has three presentations. One presentation is for homeowners, one is for builders, and one is for realtors, and to get them on board. The company I work for, Richard Dennis is the president of, about saving heat, has graciously paid for him to come out, and he's on the way, he's doing an event in Denver, and then he's going to LA, and I talked to him, and he's going to stop in Carbondale for a one-day event, and so that's going to be really nice, because it's nice to have someone else bring a new energy to it, because we all know about Core and Clear, and you see the same people at the same events, kind of, you know, doing it, and so he's going to come in and really shows how, what is a blower door test, what is infrared, really shows people how this all works, and he has this breakaway house trailer that shows all these different things, so it's really going to be exciting for me, you know, but I hope everybody comes out and just kind of gets it, because it gives an opportunity to help boost people's participation in having energy assessments done on their houses, and to find out what they're getting through that, and then hopefully moving forward and getting some work done. Another part of the program that I'm working on, I'm working with Alice Laird at Clear, she's writing a grant right now through, it's a Mother Earth Grant, not the magazine, it's just the name of a, of people that are giving out money, and it's a regional grant that she's writing for, and it's about getting, helping towns get to zero energy, which I know AJ's really interested in, and we're hoping that we can put zero energy within the scope of the town, to say that's part of it. I'm a Department of Energy Zero Energy Trainer, I've spoken with Jeff Dickinson about bringing in the ability to put zero energy in the code without being mandatory, because the problem is, is when people say, okay, I want to be, do a high-performance home, they will go to LEED, and it's a hundred pages, or they go to Passive House, and they got to bring in a certifier to do it. The Department of Energy program is only a ten-page checkoff list, it's only better than an Energy Star home, so it isn't this real detailed crazy geeky thing, it's a very simplified way to do it, and what it's there for is when people come in and say, I want to do a high-performance home, what do I do? They can go right to, through, hopefully, down the road, through the building department or the E-Board website, and go to the Department of Energy, and they have it all laid out for them. Makes it really easy to put that, part of that is the scope of the town, to look for, because real, really, the easiest way to crush our greenhouse gas, carbon footprint, all that, is a new building. It's really expensive to go back and take an old house, or an old building, and retrofit it, so once you can just get it on the table, it's an opportunity, and Core and Clear both have grants of eight thousand dollars to someone that walks in the door and says, I'm going to build a zero-energy house, and it, the certification of occupancy, their CO, they can actually get two checks for, you know, sixteen thousand dollars, they can get paid back, so in that scope, we're trying to get something that can be fit in.
Yeah, no, thanks, Scott, I think the Eco Learning Day, and the bigger idea, but the Eco Learning Day is an offset for Hazardous Waste Days, great, and I know John Plano, our building official, and with our building department, trying to do, whether it be our updates to our commercial and residential green building codes, and some of the classes and courses that they put out for the credits, and has a pretty extensive list, I think he'd be a great resource to see when that date happens, is there maybe another workshop or another thing we can piggyback to have that be the time for homeowners, builders, realtors, to kind of work together, like a fall workshop idea, but I think that that is a great, and appreciate the support of the sponsorship, that, you know, we can't afford to do the big, you know, waste diversion, hazardous waste days every year, but I think something like this keeps the ball moving, so I think that's great to see for this year. One thing I know AJ wanted to bring up was the idea of a potential ban on single-use plastic bottles, and the one thing, if that's something that you all want to undertake this year, definitely, my feedback is, most of us on this board recognize the issue there, and have a certain sophistication of awareness of what it is, and why this need is wanting to be addressed, this issue, but after living through the bag ban conversation, and how that was rolled out to the community, I'd really like to see a strategy on, if the E-Board, if this is one of the priorities, you know, is it a subcommittee, is it the full board, what's the strategy moving forward, what's the timeline, what are the educational components, before any of that is looked at from this board to come forward to actually adopt anything? I don't want to see people taken by surprise, considering the ballot issue that we have before the voters today, that was a multi-year process, with a lot of outreach, a lot of workshops, a lot of lead-up, and there's still many questions out in the community. So I just want to make sure that before we undertake that, we're aware. One of the things, even with the bag ban, I wanted to see it town-wide, I'd still like to see it expanded town-wide. I would love for us to accomplish that first, before we went into another restrictive measure, but knowing that that is a recurring topic, and something that other communities have done, you know, we're not the only ones to look at this, but really, let's get our strategy in place, that's one thing that I feel pretty strongly about, not necessarily taking a position against it, because I'm supportive, it's just, what does it mean, how do we roll it out, how do we get the public's support and buy-in, and is it an outright ban initially, or is it a phasing approach, especially with the educational component, where most folks get it, but when you're in a pinch, you know, it's kind of a necessity thing for some folks, so how can we do that? We've even talked about simple things like the water bottle refill stations, and having a few of those in town facilities, whether it be the rec center, just as a demonstration project, so that people, you know, at the rec center, a lot of people bring their reusable plastic bottles, or metal bottles, or whatever material it may be, so I think there's a few ways that we can work on that strategy. But AJ, I don't know if you had stuff you wanted to add in that regard for the mission?
Yes, the big thing is working with the RMI Community Outreach Plan, that's in our packet, and I'll be meeting with some representatives from RMI next week, and then also, meeting with E-Board a lot, and making sure that we do a very thorough plan, because it's easy for a lot of citizens of Carbondale to see the need for it, but got to make sure that the people who are on the other side understand why, and we get their input, so we'll be doing a very thorough process.
Great. Are there, any other board comments or questions regarding that particular work plan item? Katrina?
You know, I've actually had a very strong, I've looked into the water bottle thing before, and I, you know, I think that it's a huge problem, there's billions of them a year produced, single-use containers that are petroleum sourced, there's lots of problems with them, they leach toxins into the water, they're also really critical for some people, there are some people that don't have access to running water, that they're, you know, they're really important in any kind of emergency or disaster situation, they're, you know, there's sort of a time and a place, it's kind of like this necessary evil in a certain situation, but just using them frivolously and creating waste is a problem, so I also wouldn't want people going into a gas station to buy a bottle of water, and it not being there, and so they buy soda instead, or something, you know, if they want water, you know, so I think finding what those alternatives are, and having them be available, I'm glad we're having the conversation, but I also don't want to have unintended problems, I mean, we did a great job giving away free bags when we switched over to only reusable bags at the supermarket, so maybe we give away, you know, water bottles, or something like that, with, that can come out of this waste diversion money, or something, so I just want to really make sure that we're meeting the need that that product is needing, before we take it away from people, because some people rely on it. We luckily have very clean water, but we do have adjacent communities that the clean water comes that way, and that's how people drink water in their homes, so I just want to be careful of that. But we're going on other topics, too, right?
Yeah, I know, yeah, but, yeah, but I think that's all good feedback, Katrina. And also, you know, just for most people, how does it, how does it work, is it, are we more effective education-wise, or is it just someone then goes to Walmart in Glenwood and buys their case of water, and then they come here, and that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to achieve? So I think, I mean, it's not completely fleshed out, and we get that, so I don't, you know, but, but what is the strategy, and what's kind of the plan, so we all know how it's being worked on, I think would be helpful. Awesome, pretty ambitious.
Yeah, a lot of that will be in conjunction with Waste Free Rowing Fork, which is a regional look.
Yeah, cool.
And the bag?
The bag, the original bag discussion was under Waste Free Rowing Fork, and I do think that it helped kind of standardize some of the conversation, although different communities took the ban and did different things with it, whether it be a referendum to turn it over, or what have you, but I do think that it's more of that kind of we're in this together approach, and that Waste Free Rowing Fork is kind of a, you know, it doesn't really have boundaries, it, any program can be brought underneath that, and it's currently being ran and administered by Core, that program, so I think if we were going to move forward with expanding the bag ban in town, and/or the single-use bottles, that that would be a good forum for that, and I do get it, that bilingual outreach is crucial. And just as, while I'm on the waste thing, it's, I know it probably seems like that we're just the waste committee, but we really just react to how much awareness there is in Carbondale around this entire issue, with, as far as the regional outlook goes as well, Picking County has included Carbondale in the Picking County Ten Year Solid Waste Diversion Strategy, and the reason they, we didn't really even suitor them to do that, they kind of approached us, and they knew that because of us working on the waste, hauler's ordinance revision for many years, and then the Green Team and all the things that happened at Mountain Fair, they just know that there's a lot of that awareness in this community, and so, as of right now, for no extra cost, I can't tell you what the future holds with the plan, but they are including Carbondale, and we've already had one staff slash E-Board level meeting with Jay, and Larry, and Mark, and a lot of different people a couple weeks ago, and so I think there's promise in coming up with some regional approaches for the whole waste diversion and waste hauling topic. One thing that I found from working on the waste diversion ordinance just for Carbondale for many years, is that, that we were what-if-ing everything, so it's, we would get to a certain position, and then we'd be like, whoa, just a little bit more work, and we can maybe add that, so we are trying to take all these really awesome heady topics and put it into this seven-page document, when really, I think that the document needs to be larger, and more visionary, and more proactive, instead of reactive, so it's more of telling, telling folks what we want, instead of saying, no, you can't do that. And so I think that there's a balance there, and so I have promise in that, by us being part of this, this plan, it's not going to solve all of Carbondale's problems by any means, but it's going to raise the level of awareness to the regional aspect, and so I think that we'll see something coming out of that, that could be more of regional language that Basal and Snowmass and everyone could then adopt at the town level. So that's going to happen in 2016, and I can keep, you know, the Board of Trustees updated on that as it moves forward.
Yeah, I went to the regional meeting, that was the same day that the meeting was here at town, it was at Picking County, and there were representatives from Snowmass, Basal, Aspen, and then I, myself, and a couple other E-Board members, Natalie and Rob, represented Carbondale, and it's, it's pretty exciting, they're, you know, and they're going to try and put together an intergovernmental association for this as well, I guess there was one, they're going to disband it, and then start another one, so we'll have like, regional talks on waste, and she was taking what we all wanted to see, and writing them on a big flip chart. It's pretty cool, to be a part of that, so.
Thanks for highlighting that, and, you know, serving and doing all that, I know that some of us, maybe not Alan, but some of us get a visceral reaction when we talk about Picking County, so to see this in a positive collaboration and approach, and something that we know, not just members of the E-Board, but this board is passionate about, it might help us, get us over that hurdle to adopt something when it comes to our, whether it be waste hauling, or a few other areas, so that, that's pretty exciting to me.
And I also say, I think that even after that is done, the town, you know, because Jay and Mark were really helpful in helping us with these rewrites of these revisions, and so I don't want it to look like that all the work that has been put into the waste hauling ordinance is for naught, I mean, we're still learning that the town wants more, and so we're reacting to that, and in 2015, River Valley Ranch is now a single hauler, I don't know what that holds for the rest of the town, I can't speak to that, because there has to be more public outreach and such, but it's proving that it's actually working really well, and so I think that it's just the bargain keeps getting moved up, and we're trying to just react to that, it's not us just fumbling it, not doing it correctly, or, you know, trying to put our own pet projects into it, and just making it go on forever, we really are working on it. And so, another, you know, the single-use bottle is just another thing, it's like, okay, well, that's another thing that the town would like to see, and that's going to have to be addressed in whatever ordinance we come up with, whether it's operational, or more proactive, and kind of visionary, so I just wanted to speak to that in general.
No, I think that's great, and then also, in the past, when the E-Board has had some columns, whether it be quarterly, or in the Sun, and I know that might not have even been 2015, it might have been previous, but I think that was also helpful to highlight a few of the things that the E-Board is undertaking, and I'd encourage that. And I'd encourage that kind of outreach as well. Because this annual update and things that we get from AJ and on a quarterly basis, hey, this is what's happening, or something's ripe for the discussion for us to make a decision on. But I I found those articles very helpful um, for people to kind of see how active our E-Board was and and what was going on. So I don't know if that's still in the plan or in the works. I don't mean to add more work or muddy things up, but even whether it be the Eco Learning Day and, you know, going up to that or with the spring cleanup, you know, having the the information at City Market and other areas are great, but also, hey, this is the day. If you guys want to come, this is when you participate. So um, don't know if that's that's workable. Or even a an upcycling of your previous columns, just to get that refresher back for people.
Natalie's one of our newest members and she's she's taken on that. She's, yeah, and she's also reached out um, to the city of Aspen about what they're do, about their their uh, water bottle refill stations to find out what's working there.
Okay. Great, Jay?
And one of the things where we get a lot of feedback at the staff level is trying to get the right PR out for idling um, for the wood smoke stove issue in the in the fall. And we can run our little ads in the paper, but it's really helpful when the E-Board has put some meat behind it with some more research and here's why these are issues that need to be addressed um, on the educational side. So any help on that, particularly in the falls, we roll in on both idling wood stoves, that kind of PR stuff, you know, our our little quarter-page ad, you know, running in both the bilingual, you know, in the Spanish newspaper and ours is is nice, but it it doesn't have a lot behind it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
And we had that on Katie and Kay, I think, last fall. And it was, we used the PSA that's available to us to mention that about burning your wood stove smart, you know, and burning it hot and, you know, just some different things around that. Because it is, you know, a renewable resource and using wood can be good, but it's also can just hover over the town with the inversions that happen around here, so. Yeah.
That's good. Any other board comments, Frosty?
Yeah, I I just want to re, chime in a little bit on the plastic water bottle because I I've kind of believed in it for a while. It's it's it, and I just, you know, there's, it's such a big industry, a hundred billion dollar a year industry, that once you start trying to affect that industry, you're going to get a lot of pushback because there's big bucks involved in it. But the the thing, I'll just did some, you know, just a little Google stuff today to just to check on it. And coincidentally, I had the the Defenders Wildlife Magazine this this month said that 1960, fewer than 5% of birds were found with plastic in their stomachs. And now we're got 90% of seabirds have plastic in their stomachs. And 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 a lot of times that can be fatal, obviously, especially to the chicks. And not that I'm just a total bird person, but that just happened to to resonate with me. But 50 billion bottles and and, you know, and I think it's important to keep in mind, if it's 50 billion bottles a year, if somebody says, well, that can't be 50 billion. Well, if it's if it's plus or minus 10%, if it's 45 billion, that's still a lot of bottles. So if if you want to argue and it's not 50B and it's really 40 billion, okay, fine. It's 40 billion bottles. Okay, but but it's still a bunch of bottles. And 80% of them are ending up in the landfill. For Christ's sake, we couldn't find a 757 jet in the ocean because of the garbage in the ocean. So it's it's a huge problem. And I think we need to, I think we need to address it. I think we need to move forward as best we can with this and and educate people. And and other people have done this, you know, so we're not reinventing the wheel. You know, I think Katrina, your, the things you bring up are good issues with, but I think they can be addressed in the size of the bottle and all that kind of stuff. So I I think we can figure this out, but let's let's start figuring it out and let's set that example, let's be the change we want to see. And I think I believe in that, I know you do too, I know y'all do, so. And and I, it reduces the waste stream. The people aren't recycling this anymore. It's not, it's not, it doesn't pay, so they get in the landfill. So anyhow, I'd like to see us move forward that as best we can.
Thanks, Frosty. Katrina, you had a hand up?
Um, yeah, I, you know, I also wanted to ask about the expansion of the ba, uh, bag ban to include gas stations and liquor stores and other places that are letting out plastic bags. And so that's something that isn't included automatically. We have to adjust. I mean, I'm just not clear on on how we take action to expand that.
It'd have to be expanded on square footage. And early last year, we did talk when Jason Haber was involved with Core. We discussed, we we had some conversations about that and and it would go to places like Ace and Family Dollar and Napa.
And so you're thinking the best first step is outreach on that, or?
Well, they're not going to do it voluntarily. I mean, they've already said that.
I mean, I would be.
Not you guys, the the business owners. See, I know, no, you guys are volunteering for the board. I meant the business owners haven't voluntarily offered it up because they haven't done it.
But it was voted in, so we can't just open it up and change it? Is that how it is?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, it was, no, we voted on it and then it went to a referendum and failed on that um, by a handful of votes. So we could pass another ordinance.
You could do it by ordinance.
Yeah, um, we could further restrict it and just make it town-wide on any business or town-wide on a business of such and such size, which is the standard we've already started, and potentially see a potential referendum come from that.
Size of the business is probably the most objective way of doing it to to, until you get down to a level where it's 3,000, 4,000 square feet or what have you, then you're going to have a lot of really small businesses that it could, it's going to affect more. So I think that there is some some outreach to be done. But you know, the, like Julia's saying, the Family Dollar, Ace, you know, like the the places that are fairly sizable, but they're not quite as big as City Market. I think that the City Market was just the first attempt and it was set at 45, 40,000 square feet, I think, was what the original threshold was. I can't remember.
I don't think it was that high, but it was it was high enough to where it only applied in essence to one store. And and that was part of, at least my non-support of it is I think if if the issue is plastic bags and single-use plastic bags, should be town-wide on any any business. But I also know that not everybody likes that.
Well, we had conversations too about um, would all, if we were going to do it all, you know, every business, then who would who would have to pay into the bag fund fee? They, you know, did offer pl, you know, paper bags. It might be kind of a burden for some of these smaller mom-and-pops. Um, I mean, it wouldn't so much for the bigger, you know, corporations like Ace and 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 all that. But I know that that had come up in our conversations.
Oh, because they all have to switch to paper or, but not, maybe not necessarily. I mean, depending on how we write it, because maybe there's just a bag fee on any bag that they use or something.
Yeah, but just the, but then keeping track, like say, Teresa's Market gives away, you know,
The accounting of it.
Or Lulubell or one of any of the smaller businesses gives away a bag. Just the accounting part of keeping track of that might be burdensome to the smaller businesses. And, you know, it could be just on square footage. If you're this big, then you pay into the fund. If you're, if you're not, then you, you know, if you're smaller, then maybe you just, you don't have to pay into the fund, but you just can't offer a plastic bag. I mean, I definitely personally would like to see the funds grow so we can use them for more diversion purposes and.
I mean, I think it would be good for us to talk about it. You know, I mean, there are some places where you go buy your plastic water bottle and they put it in a plastic bag for you. And that happens in this town all day long. So I think it would be more equitable if it was applied across the board. And maybe there's some some ways to, you know, not burden our our small businesses. But it's really the customer who is demanding a disposable, free item that should maybe be responsible for paying. But um, I think we did a good job of mitigating that for people that couldn't afford bags as well. So that was one thing. The other thing is on home efficiency. I I prefer other, over other other methods of encouraging people to be efficient, to educate people, you know. I I was able to make my own home more efficient just by turning things off, unplugging things, um, reducing my use, paying attention to, you know, when things were running when they didn't need to be. And I would love if um, the E-Board could put together a sort of like five points of how to reduce your energy bill or your energy demand, you know. And I think people don't realize when they're the, when they're wasting energy at home, they're leaving things on. You know, I think a lot of us charge our our um, personal devices and then leave them to just leak the energy out all the time, you know. So there's a lot of waste going on. And I think um, people could really benefit and and we could really reduce our carbon just by developing really good habits in our homes. And um, but people don't necessarily know what those things are. They don't necessarily see their their wasteful behaviors. And um, and also that connection where, you know, one one watt of light wasted actually has a lot of waste along the way because we lose a lot of the energy through transmission. So even wasting a little bit at home wastes is, wastes a lot more down um, through the line. So I would love to see a sort of like, it's really simple, clear um, educational campaign that just gives people tips on how to become more efficient in their behaviors at home.
Okay, so Katrina, any other, I think those are helpful. Pam and then Alan?
Yeah, um, I had two thoughts. I wonder if it would be worth asking other larger-scale businesses to voluntarily participate in the bag ban? And if we have that much money that you illustrated, maybe we offer them a collection of um, low-cost-to-us reusable bags in exchange for their voluntary efforts? I don't know if that would get them on board to help participate in it. But um, you know, one, it would see how committed they are to that. And two, it would see if it was worth trying to pursue a ban more widespread than just City Market. I don't know. Um, and then I would love it if you guys and the town could help entice people to pick up litter because it's just outrageous. And this time of year, it's especially bad because the snow all melts and it's all exposed. But um, even the last couple of years, it just seems like throughout the summer, there's just more and more litter all over town. And even just asking people as they walk around to kind of pick up as they go and encourage folks, you know, because I think if one person sees another person doing it, they're going to do it and um, start a little campaign of help clean up our streets a bit.
Okay.
It's kind of nasty. I try to pick stuff up when we go back and forth from the park and I'm amazed at how much, when you start looking, there's gobs.
Yeah, that could be something fun for a spring cleanup day.
Yeah.
I don't know, get, I mean.
Maybe a little.
Off the top of my head, like.
Competitive.
Yeah, competitive thing and get some business to donate a pizza or a gift certificate or something, and then people could bring their trash.
Well, like they used to adopt a highway, you can adopt a street or a block or a, you know, pick your area.
No, that's good, Pam, thanks. Alan, you had a hand up?
So yeah, I I just kind of wanted to check in and see how work with Core and Clear is going. I know that at times, you know, you have a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts and a lot of programs going on. We talked about it, but asking to go to see you, I just want to make sure it's happening or if it isn't, is there a way to kind of make that work better?
Yeah, I'm actually pleased to see that, so I have here the scope of work that Clear and Core submitted to the town. And they kind of, they collaborated more. Because I think in the past that there has been a little bit of confusion about, you know, the acronym of Clear and Core and what areas do they serve? And what are they doing for the town of Carbondale? And so um, they, it's about $125,000 scope of work. And they put it all into, you know, one little packet that both organizations want to work on in 2016. And then we're working, you know, the E-Board works closely with Core and Clear on all these topics, and they mentioned E-Board in here several times. So I think that the collaboration and just the understanding of what these organizations do for Carbondale and and, you know, how their kind of extended sustainability staff basically for the town, I think it's becoming a little more more, you know, clearly stated between the two groups. So um, one of the things that we're going to work with with both groups is the, uh, everyone calls it the E-Plan, but I guess it's the Energy and Climate Action Plan that was adopted in maybe '09. And a lot of stats have been pulled out of there, you know, for this climate tax that's going to be on the ballot. And so there's kind of a move of to update that and show what has already been accomplished, is kind of what Mark was talking about. But then also maybe put some some more topics in there that are more current. And maybe, for lack of a better word, some type of sustainability plan. Or I don't even know if the name of it will be changed, but there's already a lot of good stuff in there. And so we're going to sit down with them and kind of kick that off and figure out how we can ma, make that plan speak more to what people in Carbondale want. And then I don't, I probably won't go into their scope of work, but.
Yeah, we've already seen it and we're running out of time. So I mean, we, but as long, I think to Alan's question of the working relationships better, they're checking in.
Yeah.
Getting by, I mean, because you're our advisory board on these issues and we don't want to get too far out ahead of you. We also want to be able to finish some stuff, you know, because then we have to circle back and implement a few things as well. So want to make sure that that communication is open.
Yep, for sure.
Great. Alan, did you have anything else you wanted? Any other board comments on that? Patrick, did you have something you wanted to add? Pretty quick, um, please.
So um, as you know, I'm a sustainability guy. I'm studying this in school and getting close to graduation, maybe another year. I read the RMI report and it's got a great outline on how to go forward with the programs that you're talking about, whether it's water bottles or bags or whatever. And it's something I don't think's really been approached right in the past. We really got to get out there and and do some work on that. My, when I read the report, I noticed Fort Collins was mentioned in the report. Fort Collins has got an amazing plan going on. And I saw a video, 10-minute video of what they're doing. And they take this idea of climate change very seriously over there. And they've had some really significant climate events over there, fire, forest fires and floods and everything else. And they're really gotten after it. They have a designated person on staff for sustainability and so on. So um, I would like to see the E-Board. I think the things we're doing are great. And Julia's been a ball of energy here and she's gotten going on all these waste programs and this is all really good. The bigger issue down the road is resiliency. And this is a word when you start looking, RMI, for example, is sort of the word. How will we do as these climate change things happen to affect us more and more? And the people in Fort Collins are affected and they know it and they're trying to do something about it. So that's was my interest in getting on the E-Board in the first place to see what we could do there. One of the things we need is data. And this goes to the Core-Clear question. And we've been wanting to get, I know Aspen's done a good job on this. We've been wanting to get the data, what are the emissions that we're working with? And RMI says you've got to have this, you know, data to get started with uh, so that you know where you're at, so you have a benchmark. Uh, I actually emailed Matt Hamilton, who I happen to know at this ski company's foundation, and we're thinking about doing a grant, which will be this fall. And he was um, sanguine about the idea of us asking for a grant to actually get the data together, if that's what it takes. So he would be, you know, tentatively, he's in favor of something like that. And um, uh, all the reports I've seen, all the sort of climate um, action reports I've seen all have that data in it. You know, they've all got some kind of resource in there that you can look at, so. And just quickly, uh, the, one of the reasons we will be needing this, and I'm sure those of you who ski, as I do, uh, for a living, partly, I picked up something today, 600 ski areas have closed since 1950, 600. And um, we've lost a couple of weeks off the season up in Aspen. And we're expecting that to start accelerating. And so that, as you folks know, the reason Carbondale is as prosperous as it is is because there's money coming down the valley. And uh, so as an E-Board member, doing my environmental job here, word of warning, that's not going to be, it's not going to be this way forever. And so one of the thoughts that I have as an E-Board member is trying to work with everybody here and everybody else and seeing how we might look forward and get ready for that.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, everybody, for coming in tonight and the, you know, all the work that you've been doing, the stuff we have on the table for 2016 and and beyond. And we're very appreciative of of the volunteer efforts. And no, it's it's not always easy to distill down, even probably into a work plan. There's a lot of conversation that happens between you guys and your subcommittees. So we're very appreciative. Alan?
I, Patrick, I'm sorry, I just have to beg to differ with you. The ski season has been from Thanksgiving to the week or the second week after Easter since the early 1970s, when I moved here and and predates that. So I I don't think we've lost weeks. And it's lost some of the snow quality, but we've not lost any in time.
I agree with you.
Hold on, we're, yeah, you, we can talk about that later.
I just want to correct the record, that's been going on for decades at that time.
So thanks. And we'll move on to our housing discussion and keep us posted. But we're very appreciative of your work. And Mark, thanks for being a good staff member to support these guys. And Mark, thanks for being a good staff member to support these guys. You care a lot about this as well and I know sometimes we don't always speak the same language or you guys get very excited and then pretty soon it may morph into something else, but it's, it's very appreciative. And AJ taking a leadership role, thanks for being that liaison to these guys.
Thanks to these guys. They put in a lot of volunteer time.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you. Let's take a quick break and then we'll start up with housing in about five minutes, if that works. People need to stretch their legs.
Just to remind the board with our new, the temporary streaming system we have.
It's live.
We're now positive you're live, so if you want to talk, mute your mic.
Yeah. Oh, that's cool.
Oh, yay.
Okay. Yeah, oh, nice. Yeah, I know, I know. I think these are just leftovers from other parties because we haven't had new ones in a long time. Okay, good. In the bin. Okay.
Yeah, I know, giveaway.
Yeah, most of us bring our water bottles. It's just like when I run from my office to here, I'm slammed. Yeah. No, I think there are some in there. Yeah, no, no, it's fine. Okay, are we all set, ready to go? AJ will join us in a minute. The next item on our agenda is a discussion that we had earmarked for a future work session on our affordable, under our guise of affordable housing, or not guise, but our issue. But this was more in what our inclusionary housing commitments requirements are, some things that we may want to change. And so in our packet originally, there was a memo in there more speaking to the UDC, which is fine, but wasn't really what we were going to talk about tonight. And so staff had another memo that went out Friday. If those of you didn't receive it, it is at our place. So this is our time to visit on things like our RO or certain requirements that we have as far as, we need to obviously update our AMI, but with our requirement of mitigating new development, is 20% the number we want to stick with some of those things? So John, if you have some things you wanted to add, I know that you've been working closely on this.
Yeah, apparently KT and I crossed our wires on exactly what the memo was going to be, so she provided the memo on the, on the UDC. But in, speaking with her on the phone, she did say that she's actually using our inclusionary housing requirements for other municipalities and shopping it around because she thinks it's the best in the valley currently.
Wow, that's awesome.
Of course, we have to get a development to actually.
Do it.
Yeah. But that was, that was one of the good things that she brought up and then she's looking forward to hearing comments on the guidelines.
Great. And especially with, you know, Glenwood Springs discussion on certain, relaxing certain development standards and fees and such. And I know that we have, this board has talked about it numerous times, but one of the things that you don't get around is the impacts there. So say we waive our parkland dedication fee or reduce it, the need for parks and athletic fields and those kind of amenities still are there. Tap fees, the, the use and the need and to fund depreciation is still there in capacity in, in the lines. So it's kind of interesting to see, interesting to see what some of our neighboring communities are doing, but I definitely think that there's a few things we can revise here. I, I would love to get rid of the six month deal on RO. I think to me, you're either living there or you're not. And I don't know, I mean, I want people to be able to go on vacation as well, but I would be all ears for looking at a little bit higher threshold. I don't know if folks have strong feelings on that or if there's a recommendation on what we want to do in that regard, but.
Well, I have a question on that because, and I was reading this on a very small device, so it could be, could be operator error, but what is the policy? Because I read it two different ways in the guidelines. On page 116, in A, or sorry, in B1, it says resident owner occupied units must be occupied by the owner at least six months in a 12-month period. And then on the following page, which would be 117, paragraph E reads, RO is a category for resident owner occupied units. Deed restricted to require the owner to live in the unit as the sole place of residence at least nine months out of any 12 months. So what am I missing?
That's a typo. It's supposed to be six months.
It used to be nine and it got dropped to six. My guess is we fixed it in one place and not the other.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do believe that it is six months?
Correct. It was nine for a while and then.
Because I lobbied very hard for nine and then Mr. Folkrad convinced three of our colleagues to go his way, I thought.
That is, your, your memory is correct.
Okay, yeah.
It was the hunting season provision.
I will go back to my original petition, which was nine months and I picked nine months because teachers have substantial time off and I thought it was only right that they'd be able to split town for their summer if they wish.
Thanks Pam, Alan?
Well, I mean, I think the whole thing is, why are we saying that this can be a temporary residence, whether it's six months or nine months? It's either your residence or it's not your residence. If, if you're a teacher and you take golf for two and a half months, which is all you really get anyway, do you, is that fine? I mean, but is that still your home? Is it your primary residence or is it not? Is it six months? Can you, can you kind of live in Denver or live in Phoenix and play golf in the winter and then come up here for the summer and stay in your RO house? I mean, all that just seems to me just, I don't know why there's any kind of allowance. There can be allowance for, you know, I guess if you want to leave for a couple of months a year or something, but that all this gets to the rental, short-term rental thing. That gets into a whole different policy area, I think. I think either RO is your residence or it's not. And if it's not, and it's not really resident occupied, we should call it something else.
I think, you know, that it calls it out as their primary residence. I think this was just helping to set a threshold of dealing with that gray area when people come in and say, you know, I'm six months somewhere else, this is still my primary residence for voting purposes or whatever and, but they're not here in it. I, you know, not to disagree, it should be their residence, but I think that was just a threshold to help on the enforcement side. You know.
And so is there a better number? I know before it was nine months, so it could be enforceable or it be enforced. But is it, is there a better number from what, I mean, John, with your conversations, is there one? Because I, I think this is more to respond to if a neighbor feels like there's a restricted unit in, you know, next door or even anywhere that, that could be used for full-time housing for somebody and it's not, how do we move that along the process?
They really, the limitation on how, how long they actually live there runs the gamut from one month up to full-time.
Because I'd be more supportive of full-time or getting as close to full-time, knowing that if someone goes on an extended vacation, doesn't mean that you give your house up. But if it's, you're clearly splitting time and you're not really residing in this unit that has been provided as part of our inclusionary housing for people that we need in our community to function, I think that's the question. And we need to be able to allow it to turn over, that it's not a house for life necessarily unless you meet those requirements. So I'm sensitive to our aging population and retirement age and some of those other things, but if this is for impacts born on development and other constraints, I don't want to, sorry Frost, I'm not telling you that you got to leave town. I'm just saying that.
Douglas, if you were looking at me when you did that.
To have the benefit of, of this program. I mean, I think that's what some of our neighboring communities are faced with because the next generation can't get a foot in the door because these other folks have, have the room. And maybe that's controversial, but I'd be more of the mindset to have it be clearly defined as this is your residence or it's not. Pam?
So what is the number of months out of the last 12 that a person in an AMI unit has to be living there?
They have to live there.
They have to live there. And then they can ask for the one or two-year special case scenario.
Correct.
But this nine or six months out of last 12 does not apply to AMI units.
It does not only applies to.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure I was right.
So like for instance, Cleveland Place is a neighborhood, more recent neighborhood that has quite a few RO, only RO units. There, that's the only restriction on there. And that hasn't been enforced and some in the community think it's fine and others it's used as rentals. It's not actually resident occupied. There's another person occupying it, but it's, it's not the intent.
Owner occupied and resident occupied are different things, aren't they?
Oh, yeah. If you own it and live in it.
Right. I mean, you can rent it out on a long-term lease and it's still resident occupied.
It's a bit of a misnomer. I've always interpreted RO to be owner occupied.
Yeah, it's resident owner.
Yeah, it's resident owner.
Resident owner occupied.
Yeah. So that's where if someone, you know, buys into, and I'm not hearing folks from Cleveland Place, you know, outraged by this. I'm just saying that that is one of our more recent developments where I think, what are there, nine units or something in there that are RO, have the designation of RO?
Yeah, I believe that's.
And I, I don't know if all of them are. And that was one of the selling points of not only just the affordability by design, which, you know, I know a few people that paid a lot of money for their homes. And then the RO to keep it as part of, you know, the density trade-off. And I don't think that that was all that beneficial for our.
We also didn't do it as a deed restriction.
No, I understand that.
So if it was a deed restriction going through the program, there would be opportunity for more enforcement.
They sold our deed restricted units free market so that clearly that.
Only one.
I still, there were some issues there.
But the point is, is we actually approved it with it being a covenant and not a deed restriction. And that's the lesson learned for the next RO project.
Yeah, hopefully.
So Katrina? So what happens to them if they are not occupying their owned property?
Their enforcement is through the covenants and the other owners of the project.
Well, I mean, I don't mean in that specifically. I mean, if we change this and we have all over town, people that have huge vacant houses that.
So like Keter with, that's the other more recent. And that's with Ski Company. We've had a different conversation with them on that.
Yeah.
That's a bit of a whole can of worms, but there's a few issues there.
Probably not much, I would guess, would be the answer in all reality.
In terms of our current inventory, it probably wouldn't be a huge difference in where we're actually enforcing deed restrictions. I think it's more also a statement for the future of what we, we expect for, for our units.
So we can have this on here, but it's very difficult to enforce, maybe is what you're saying?
In some, not, not to enforce under our, the amount of units currently, which are ROs, which are enforceable through deed restrictions, it's relatively limited in town. So, and those in Kater Grove, we gave an exception to the Ski Company to allow them to be rented, which is something, another discussion for the board to have probably this summer sometime is whether or not that needs to be reversed because there are some unintended consequences with that and the market's back and, you know, Ski Company's still holding on to those units. And particularly in the multifamily units, we're having folks who can't get regular financing to get in there. So that, that's a little.
Because there's so many being rented.
Yeah, under the new finance, you know, some of the new finance mortgage regulations. So there are, there are issues on, on that. And that's a case where we gave, took an RO for a good chunk of the project and gave an exemption to it for the Ski Company because of the downturn in the economy. But that needs to be revisited and then those would be enforceable.
Well, I mean, I think it makes sense to increase it, you know, I mean, kind of, you know, I don't necessarily see how, you know, again, how, how that'll be enforced, but I think, you know, in terms of what we're going for with this rule, I think it makes sense to increase it so that people don't just like get a cheap vacation house or whatever it is that could occur.
So is there general consensus on expanding the, the timeframe to at least nine months, maybe increasing it to 12? I don't know where that magic number is for people, but.
12 months is fine with me.
Yeah, I like full-time. I mean, people can still have their vacations.
Okay, so we'll.
Well, I just don't want to put a teacher in the pickle.
It's still their residence though.
Okay.
I mean, it's just where they live. If they leave for a while.
Okay. Okay.
So that, that was an easy one. What's next? Should we touch the number on new mitigation for new, or mitigation for new development? Alan?
I'd like to bring up why commercial development's exempt. I mean, there's, all through this thing is laced as jobs are created by development and it should, you know, the housing should be part of that. And then it's all about residential development, which is, is much less of a job generator than a new city market. I think it's just, it is. Or a expanded co-op, mansion co-op, or a whatever's going to happen with the, with the old city market. All that, that's, you know, that's, that's really where the, you know, the kind of the rubber meets the road is how do you, how do you, how do you, you know? And I think if I remember correctly, the original kind of affordable housing stuff up in, in Paken County in Aspen was around commercial development. That was really where they focused.
You know, I think the answer to that, Alan, is a lot depends on how your local economy's, you know, structured and where the demands are placed. You know, in Carbondale, residential's, you know, our primary, you know, item where we see economic growth going on in terms of building permits and what's coming forward. We do very few residential projects. There's one, you know, coming forward now, but that's not the regular. Most of ours, done a couple warehouses, one main. you know, coming forward now, but that's not the regular. Most of ours, done a couple warehouses, one main street building, a dentist's office. It's, it's pretty modest. We don't see a, a big demand on commercial development. When you, and particularly in terms of that tourism resort type stuff, which really generates a lot of jobs and affordable housing demands. If the board wanted us, um, you know, the board requested us to, to get a price and, um, we're finalizing that for a couple different, consultants on the, you know, looking at housing mitigation for below four units, whether that's large houses or a single, single house development or something in one large house. I think we've got, um, found something. The one consultant we wanted to use, um, wasn't, wasn't doing that work anymore. So I think we've got an alternate, which we'll be bringing forward to you. You know, if that's something the board wants to look at, that needs to just go through the, the economic analysis, say, here's what the demands are and here's what the mitigation requirements are for, for a basis. I've worked in communities where all the mitigation was only, um, commercial and tourism type development. We didn't do any mitigation on residential, cause that's just, there wasn't any room to build residential in, in town. That's not where the demand was. Um, and we're receiving the employee demands. Um, and that's why our mitigation, I mean, 20% on four and above units, it's, that's why we're not generating much units. You know, the many units are, it takes a large development. You know, RVR was the last big project, which provided significant housing, um, to town. And I think that was under the 15% requirement, not 20. But we could look at that, but we'd have to do an analysis on the, the economic side. And if the board wanted us to, we, we could, you know, maybe commercials coming back and it's worth taking a look at.
I think it'd be worth it to see what the, that number is for that consultant when we look at, at the other units and just see what that kind of add-on for that analysis. Cause I don't think it, it doesn't necessarily hurt to have those numbers unless it's gonna be a million dollars, you know? I don't think it's gonna be that, but, um.
Yeah, our nickname isn't.
I just would like to really look at it broadly. I mean, I think the, the four, you know, the fifth unit, if you put a fifth unit in, it's gonna be affordable. No one's gonna put a fifth unit in. It's just, it's just not gonna happen. And I think the, so I don't think that's necessarily working quite right. And then I think that, you know, exempting commercial entirely doesn't work quite right either. Maybe there, maybe it's, it's a fee in lieu with commercial. I don't know what it is, but I think if, if we're gonna examine this and then pay a consultant to be looking at this stuff, are there, is there ways out there to kind of think of it more globally than just really putting it in on the, one portion of the residential development market, which is multifamily housing. It's a, you know, if, I guess if, if wheel circle got built these days.
Or, or a single family of more than four units, subdivision of more than four units, which is what Frida's will be on the Thompson Park. Oh, yeah.
Something like that to build?
Yeah, it dropped down with Ross, proportionally took out some of the units, but there's, there are units which are supposed to come on proportional to each phase.
Right.
Which is also the important part. Where we've gotten in trouble before is, um, deferring him to certain phases or future phases.
Waiting until the last phase and then it doesn't happen.
The Rick Valentine thing.
Right.
Pam, you had a hand up?
Well, just in respect to you saying that the, the five threshold not working, because the economy sort of tanked right when this got put into place, we haven't had that many opportunities to see it play out. And I, I hear what you're saying and I, I wouldn't want somebody to decide to do less in order to avoid that, but it hasn't, I don't know that it's fully been tested because the economy just sort of went kaput, you know? And so really, real, I mean, past those three that we just mentioned, I don't know who else even fell into this since whatever year this was passed, probably 2008 or '09? It was early on in the beginning of my time.
Yeah, I think it was eight.
So anyway, not, I, I would try not to make drastic changes to that part yet, until we feel like it's been fully tested. But I had a couple of things here and I apologize, I can't find it right now, but I'll start with this telephone being a, a requirement. Are we ready to pick it apart or just talk broadly?
I think we're just more talking broadly than
Okay.
over analyzing all the requirements. You mean a telephone interview? Is that what you're talking?
Well, it says verification of telephone service under the section two of how to qualify for community housing. And I would just have no memory of that being in there and why that's important. And I don't think a person should have to have a phone.
Yeah, I think that that's something that we could look at.
And then, so a couple, a broader question, is there any ever a time where we review what their income and asset caps are? To make sure that they haven't, you know, all of a sudden got in a job that puts them way outside of their category, income and asset?
That does get reviewed.
How frequently?
We do it right now on the initial application. But then from time to time, I've been told that the housing authority will revisit income caps.
And nothing in here that I read says you have to, you would be asked to sell your unit if you.
That would be, be located in the deed language, yeah.
And does that mean it would be different from one home to another if it was in the deed language?
Correct.
And so how do we, who sets that deed language?
The, the deed language comes up, comes up on when the project's being negotiated. So the, the builder really sets the deed language and then the housing authority can approve it.
It depends what category unit it is. So one, two, three or four is how we set that range per, per unit. And then the asset limitations are based on those categories.
So maybe I'm not being totally clear. So say today I qualify for category two. Cause I have under $175,000 in assets and I'm making under combined income of, uh, 81.4. But then I go on and get a really high-paying job, perhaps inherit, you know, a couple million bucks. Am I still going to qualify to be a resident in that home, even though now I am far outside of the type of person we want to reserve these units for? In other words, are we ever gonna make somebody sell their home because they have either inherited, amassed, or earned more money? That puts them outside of these category guidelines? Cause there's nothing in here that addresses that. And I don't know if we care to or not, but.
I think that's some of the issue that's, is, part of the issue that's being brought up in neighboring communities is you get your foot in the door and then you're in there forever. And if the intent is community housing for specific purposes, I think if, if the board's intent is to research how to have that mechanism in place, then we would want to direct staff and the housing authority to look into how that can be implemented.
And I don't want to kick somebody out of their home because they were successful in their career or of fortunate enough means to come upon some money. But at the same time, we have a very limited number of these units. And I would really hate the perception to be that you can sort of work it in any capacity.
Yeah, that's a good point Pam. Um, was that your?
Yeah, I gotta find this other paragraph before I talk about my third.
Katrina, you had a hand up?
Um, I just wanted to ask about the, um, so we must have done the same research thing to come up with this for units, for the inclusionary.
I mean, there was a nexus driven.
Sure. So, and I actually agree with Alan that I feel like it is suppressing larger units. I actually heard someone recently who said they wanted to do um, multi-unit dwelling and wouldn't go over for. I mean, there is this sort of thing, like they would take on this huge extra expense that doesn't necessarily pencil out profit. And so it, you know, just, I think kind of logically makes sense to stay under that threshold, just in terms of like, if you're going into it for profit, which I think is the point for a lot of um, the, these developers. And, um, so I think that there's a problem with it and a, you know, in the, in the, like, in the units that are like this around town, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure if they would have been six units or something like that. But I, but I do actually think that we've unintentionally created a situation where if someone was looking at doing four or six and they are going to have to have this huge additional expense if they go above four. So I don't know if it, you know, I mean, what we're looking at is whether this needs to be more broadly applied to one unit or two units or every unit ever. Um, so I, you know, I think that there's a problem with that.
And that is part of the analysis they'll look into.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it can be expanded.
And that's a good point, cause some of our regulations, you know, have that effect, you know, on other fronts. For example, um, and this is probably a good thing, but, you know, we don't see many houses above the square footage um, threshold to kick in the higher level of the green, residential green building code now.
Right.
You know, very, very few new homes come in above, I don't know if it's either 3,500 or 4,000 square feet, which is plenty big home. But we've actually created this incentive to, to downsize on construction because of construction costs and that very well could have been an intended consequence of, of that regulation. You know, in this one, I think it's an unintended one that we end up with people capping units off at a, at a smaller number.
But, but again.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Let Katrina finish.
Um, so yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I would like to see that changed. I would also like to see a larger, I don't know if it's a larger percentage or, um, you know, a, a larger, like, the, what is it called when they, it said it, when they buy out or the alternative, like if they're not.
The fee in lieu of?
The fee in lieu of, you know, you know, however we apply that, I just, um, you know, I mean, I, I think that this, there's a strong intention and there are these kind of intentions throughout, um, this, our, our codes, but I don't feel like they're working. And so I kind of want to pull apart the, the aspects that maybe aren't working. And I think this is one of them. And I, and I think that threshold maybe isn't high enough. Um, and that also, you know, I mean, I, I think out of this study, well, it'll be more clear where we can apply it to, to other types of development. I think it's a great idea to have a commercial inclusion. You know, there's another large business coming into town that, um, I think, you know, could feasibly, that could apply to. So I think that's a great idea. And there, um, hold on, I made a note of the other thing I wanted to ask. No, I think that's okay. I'll come, I'll come back.
Okay, thanks John and then Alan. And then I saw some other hands fly up.
I was talking to both of these concerns that most contractors understand that there's a real efficiency in doing multiples of the same thing. Like we saw in Cleveland Place, how quickly those six new homes were built. And how easily they were able to run down. And so there's, within that efficiency, it actually makes it more affordable for that last unit, that fifth unit to be, go ahead and be built and sold at a lower price. They're still recovering their costs that are relative to the rest of the development. So it, and the one, that mentality, that would work. And then to your thought, I think most demographics show that people move or tend to move every seven to 10 years. It's just a natural flow of ours that, uh, I think we've all experienced to some degree in our lives, but, uh, so the natural ebb and flow of, of life, and of course, you know, you get that two million bucks, we thought, okay, I'll get a better house, is, is a natural thing. So.
I mean, but that's just up to the individual. It's.
Well, it is. And if they hang on to that house for, for dear life, for a long, long time, they're probably a pretty good citizen in the community and, and, uh, worth being there. But I, but I do think that within that mentality, you know, it, it doesn't need to be forced because it's self-enforcing.
Thanks John. Alan, you had a hand up?
Well, I, I think, um, I don't know, I, I, it's, I mean, if the original memo to me, um, was a little weird, the one that was in the packet.
The one about the UDC?
The UDC, um, but I, I, you know, I think there were some good ideas in there. I, I wonder if, if, I mean, are we, what's our goal? Is our goal to kind of, I mean, I think, you know, housing is such an important issue and do we really want to create a subcommittee? Do we want to, once we get a, a consultant here and work with planning and maybe a couple trustees and then just really kind of look at this issue? Or, or bring in, you know, um, someone who successfully developed something with affordable housing into the conversation? I, I think there's, there's just a lot of things going on here that I think are kind of big issues that we kind of, we can piecemeal affect here. I mean, I've had people suggest that we just make everything built in town going forward, resident occupied. Way it is. And maybe you can, can lease it. Maybe there's the provisions that can be put in for that, but it's gotta be a full-time occupant by someone who lives here.
Yeah.
There's, um, you know, I, I had, you know, I was canvassing in the, um, Thompson Corner neighborhood and it's, you know, I, I had a guy just sit me down and, and with Dan, I think. And, um, he talked about single people that have gotten three-bedroom homes in, in that neighborhood in Carbondale. So you've got three bedrooms, you know, two extra bedrooms for one person. People in there that own houses outside the valley and they, they rent that house and they kind of live up here in the rental income. And maybe that's allowed. I, you know, I know it's allowed in other housing programs, but something to just think about.
They're renting their affordable housing unit?
No, they're renting their, you know.
They have a house elsewhere.
House down in Denver or wherever and, and living up here.
Oh, I gotcha.
Maybe that's okay. But I think it's a conversation to have. I think you, you kind of want to think about that. I think, the fee exemption, you know, discussion in the, in the Garfield County Housing Authority was an interesting kind of thing to bring up as, as, as an incentive. You know, how do we incentivize, um, developments of the size and scale that bring in affordable housing? Then maybe are affordable by their own right, just because they're big developments and, and that's, so I guess, um, um, I, I think that there's just kind of this, kind of broader conversation on a very kind of complicated and many moving parts topic. And I don't know that an hour and then we leave it for the year.
Oh, yeah. No, and I don't think this is gonna be left for the year. It was more of a response from, you know, are there, is there some low-hanging fruit in our guidelines that we want to, um, adjust, like RO and a few other areas?
What needs to be tweaked in our existing program?
Yeah.
Understanding that there's a much broader need in.
And then as we get these responses back and if there is, I, I think, whether it be a, a stakeholder group or, or working group, a subsection would be highly beneficial for not just to report back to this board, but have it comprised of folks in the industry, members of the public, you know, those that can work on a, on a more intensive schedule to bring back some recommendations. Because, for instance, when you talk about, do you kick someone out of their unit? There's the, the issue of maintenance. When you have a deed restriction where the appreciation is capped, you could have, especially with where the market is today, you could have a very poorly maintained unit sell for that cap. So what, what is, what are our expectations if the community in essence gives whatever be density or, or their blessing for a project to, to move forward and has this expectation for community housing? The expectation, in my view, isn't just for that first owner, um, whether it be the timeline, you know, and, and, and what's the expectation for maintenance? So I think there's probably a, a fairly substantial list of things that we could have this group look at as part of our um, housing requirements and through this study, to have that nexus and come back with a recommendation. And that's what I think would be the most productive, um, because we don't have a ton of time and this is a much broader issue. But if there are other things that board members see that we can adjust and should adjust in the interim, I, I think we're all ears. So Alan, I don't know.
The one thing I think, you know, that buying down of units and converting them to affordable housing is an interesting topic. And, and is it, I mean, you know, kind of in the current atmosphere, maybe it freezes it from getting more expensive, but then you're also kind of reducing the house. You're not adding new housing stock.
Right. And you're adding aged housing stock.
And you're like, you're allowing a developer to, to, um, to take existing housing stock out of the market in order to meet their needs rather than create new housing and add to our, a solution to our problem. So, so that's, again, that seems like it's low-hanging fruit, but then when I talk about it, it's, it's a complicated issue. And it's kind of one of those things you kind of want to look at, um, in a fairly, you know, sophisticated way.
Thanks. Pam, AJ, and then Frosty?
Yeah, so just a clarification question, and this might go on the list of things to look at, but on page 116 in that paragraph A, maybe Mark needs to read this to explain this to me, but it's time out who a qualified person needs to be and their, where they need to live. And then there's a semi-colon at the end of the paragraph, "Or the spouse or dependent of any such qualified employee, retired person or disabled person." So I read that to mean that as a dependent, your parent fit these guidelines and then you can come in without fitting them and buy a unit?
There's a definitions section on dependent and it's a minor specifically. Or if someone through other reasons, they're still qualified as a dependent.
Where's the definitions?
It's, it, for a dependent, it starts on page 18 and the guideline's 129. So it specifies what a dependent is. So it's mainly a minor. So if.
So if you're raised by a person, a minor, being a purchaser?
No, it just, um. No, it just, um, let me see. I mean, that was just the definition of dependent in the section.
Because it's saying a qualified person must fill all these categories. And then there's a semicolon, "or the spouse or dependent of any such qualified employee, retired person, or disabled person." And I read that to mean then the spouse or dependent of a qualified person could be a qualified buyer, but maybe I'm off. And I, I, again, I wouldn't want somebody to be able to enter the lottery who hasn't fulfilled these employment obligations for the years specified, simply because they're the child of someone who did, or the spouse of someone who did, or something, I don't know.
And I don't know what Mark's interpretation is. Mine would be if something happened, the minor child or dependent wouldn't be homeless.
Sure, but that's a different thing of this.
Mark, what do you?
I hadn't thought about this before. My initial reaction was that Pam may raise a good issue here about how this is drafted. And, you know, I, I thought this said that those folks dependents who are, you know, kids 18 or under, or other folks who are tack, from a tax standpoint, dependent on their parents. So that's going to ensure that they're not going to exceed the income, you know, requirement. So that they could live in the unit. It didn't, you know, I didn't think that made, meant independently that a spouse would qualify.
Okay.
As a qualified.
So maybe that's an area to tidy up.
Yes.
Well, it's qualifications to occupy it, not to buy it.
That's what I'm getting at, to occupy.
On that page, Pam? If you go up ahead.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they can, they can occupy it.
Okay, so maybe, maybe a whole new paragraph that just says that or something, or just a whole new sentence. I don't know, it's weird.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, is to occupy.
That means that Robbie and Maxine could live with you if you qualified in that house. They wouldn't be excluded.
Okay.
Because they fit the definition.
Except for the inheritance.
Yeah.
My fat inheritance?
Yeah.
The $2 million.
So they can't, not necessarily the purchasing, but just they can reside in the.
Okay, okay. And just Katrina, I think we picked five, the fifth unit being the trigger, because it just, it can't make economic sense to go any lower than that. I mean, it, it's already sort of a 20% cut on the overall unit. And what you're going to end up doing is driving up the price of those four units in order to subsidize the sale of one unit. And, and none of us want to see that happening on a larger scale. Um, so I think that the five units was kind of the minimum quantity acceptable before you would start seeing the sale prices of those other units be driven up artificially higher. In a time when the price of a home was astronomically out of control.
Sure.
You know, I mean, whatever a person could swing a shady bank to qualify them for a mortgage is what things sold for in, in the years that this was being written.
Sure.
Sale prices have come down, but, um, you know, we just didn't want to see a $700,000 home have to sell at that price in order to try to subsidize a $200,000 or so home.
Thanks Pam. AJ, you had a hand up?
I do agree with Alan in regards to commercial development and looking into those numbers, at least providing a fee in lieu that can go to a town fund so we can buy housing stock to house our employees that are very necessary to get here. And then as far as the four units, if we, I don't know, if a fee in lieu would be too burdensome in raising those four unit prices for that fifth one, but if they only built three, I guess what I'm trying to say is I feel like a fee in lieu would be good regardless. And then if it does go over four, to add that fifth unit. And so if a, some, a developer builds only two or three units, a fee in lieu would also go into that town housing stock. And that's where something like the task force will be really nice, because then a builder can tell me how much that would raise the prices of those houses. And then I have a question on, I don't know what page in the packet. It is in regards, item C and.
Sequencing?
Sequencing. Why the first mitigation unit is category two and the second mitigation unit is category one as opposed to the other way around?
I think at the time, some of the conversations were that the, the majority of the people that qualify, qualify at that two level. So you would hit the majority of folks that are in need of that housing. And then to, but then to, to make it, um, fluctuate from one, three, and four as well, but that two kind of hit that prime spot. At that time, those conversations were happening. A lot of times it didn't open up into other categories because we had plenty with two, or the projects were small enough, or if they were large enough, it covered all four categories.
I personally would like to see category one first because I have my friend base and the people I know, very few qualify for category two, and these are professionals with full-time jobs. So I'd be very interested in switching that to make category one the first mitigation unit.
Thanks AJ. Frosty, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I think the commercial makes sense to kind of look at that as to, because we obviously know there's impacts there and, and maybe there's a way to, to get some, some housing out of that. But I, I just, it's really important to keep in mind, Pam just made the point, and AJ to some extent, that if someone's going to develop a commercial property or residential property, they're going to have a profit margin in mind. And if, if there's, if, if we change that profit margin and, and require another unit or, or even a fee in lieu, then they, they're going to pass that cost along. They're not going to absorb it. It's going to go to whoever's buying the unit. The developer's not, not going to absorb that. It's going to go to whoever buys those four units. So it's important to keep that in, in mind as, as we go there. And we could even make people build outside the town limits if, if our, if we're too onerous. We've got to weigh this. It's got to be reasonable and, and well thought out. And I think that's a good reason to have the group that looks at this and studies it. Um, and I think it's important to remember too, when someone comes in with it, with a development, that we try to be as respectful of their time as we can. So if they come in and do four meetings with their professionals and they spend $10,000 on that, those meetings, that's going to go to whoever rents or buys those units. It's, the developer's not going to absorb those costs. So if we want things, density, we want units, we got to move them through the process, or else we're going to have to, it's not going to, we're not going to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Thanks, Rusty. I know John and Pam both have hands up. And I know what may look like low hanging fruit may not be all that easy to gather tonight, but I think the general feeling that I hear is that we want to have, whether it be a task force or a working group, look at this. Because with that consultant to, um, do the analysis on whether it be commercial or going below that threshold, it's also important for people to be up to date with what economics say. And unless things have changed drastically, you know, residential doesn't pay its way. Commercial is what offsets that for overall impacts. And it's one thing to look at what our housing needs are, but it's also, it's cumulative. It's green building codes, it's other regulations, it's, um, park fees, it's tap fees, it's all these things. And there are some areas where we can't take those items off the table because there are certain standards we have to have to have quality services. So with whatever, um, shape that working group takes, there also needs to be that fundamental level of, of analysis to know that. Because then i- if not, we won't be successful. Because we'll just be grabbing at different areas, thinking we're doing the right thing and in turn maybe causing harm in another way. Um, I, I don't suggest gutting our regulations or, or reducing them. I think we make them easier to read and, and more manageable for everyone in the community, whether it be a, a builder, a prospective property owner, a person that wants to plug into this. And also go over some of our long-term goals of, is there a time limit? Is this housing for a specific point in time, um, purpose? Or is it that, you know, you can live in it and retire and have, have it for 30 years if you so choose? Is, do we have a certain expectation on maintenance levels? We, uh, at one time or another had entertained, um, from staff and certain board members that didn't come to the full-fledged board, that there, there were people in our affordable housing that wanted the town to pay to re-site or re-roof their homes. That, that can't happen. Um, we just don't have those kind of resources. And part of this working group maybe wants to undertake, do, does the community want to find a funding source or a, a mechanism in place, um, that, that helps us achieve some of these things? Because without further density products, you know, the, I mean, it's a scarcity issue, and there's other things outside our control that are driving the costs up. Um, so to not, I don't want us just to take it as, these are our guidelines and let's free it up and, and make it more onerous in other ways without knowing how that's going to impact other sectors. And um, might turn out not to be the best thing. So, um, I mean, even we've talked to our partners in Garfield County about actively involving our affordable housing, and they've said that there's plenty of affordable housing in Babel, Mount Mason, Parachute. It's really hard for us to get moving on some of these things. So if it is a community need, I think let's get moving on, on what the sideboards are, what the expectations are for a task force or working group, and, and solicit input and get those, um, interested parties at the table and get them working, um, on what we want to see. Pam, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I think if you're going to get a task force or a consultant or something, I think the inclusion of somehow to get affordable housing in the rental market in this town needs to be addressed. Because that, you know, to me, this is almost an unfair conundrum to put somebody in, you know, to say, you know, you have to be restricted in how much you have in income and how much assets you have, yet you have to take on the, what can be a big liability in owning a home and may not have the capacity or the resources to replace the roof when it needs to be done, or to put in a new furnace or boiler or whatever. I mean, it's a big deal, and then, and then you let it go, and because of the low sale price, a person could, you know, there, in theory, I should hope that there's a lot of people lining up to buy these units, and I would hate that then another person who we're saying hasn't, has a lower income buys a home that right out of the bat needs some pretty big deferred maintenance stuff on it. And so to me, an affordable housing dream is true affordable rental housing, which would allow somebody for a series of years to, to save money and, and figure out how to enter in the free market. And I know there's laws that need to be worked around, but.
It's tough.
But I think that is the truest sense of affordable housing, is getting people on a, you know, you pay this much every month and we cover the rest, kind of an arrangement. And HUD might be an option. I don't, I mean, I don't really know, but.
Yes, you know, obviously in the free market side, there's no rent control in Colorado, and that's, you know, a legal issue. But there's other ways to deal with it. I mean, if you had a rental units which, um, you know, the town had a percentage of ownership in.
Yeah.
Then you can handle things a little differently.
Yeah.
There, there are some different ways to deal with it, but just the straight kind of, we approve your project and you're going to rent them for these units doesn't work. It's got to be a much different approach, but there's things that can be done.
But I think that would be a place where real meaningful, true low income, or affordable housing, low income housing could be attained.
Thanks Pam. John, I, I bypassed you with Pam.
Yeah, um, to Alan's point about buy down, early buy down units, I, not only do they not add more housing to the market, but they take, uh, what is often now affordable housing, and they buy that, and then when they rent it back or they sell it back, oftentimes they're selling it for the same price that they purchased it for in a better time. So it, uh, it takes what is now currently affordable housing, because it's been long held by an entity and, and maybe rented or owned. It, uh, and then that turns it over. It's, it's not a, it's not a good mechanism at all, in my opinion, for creating affordable housing. And we should really look at, at changing those, the terms of that particular aspect. I do know that a developer would probably very much desire to be able to build up full price units and buy an old house over here to compensate for, for the last one. But it, um, it doesn't work for us.
Thanks, John. Katrina, you had a hand up?
Um, yeah, just one question about, um, it says the minimum footage requirements. Um, this is on the third page of this printed out memo. Um, and I, and we took out the minimum footage requirements in our UDC, I think. And, but they're still in here for this specifically?
Yeah, we, we took out minimum sizes as part of our development code if someone's building this. But what we're saying is if.
Someone provides it, they have to at least provide it.
If there's something providing it, they've got to, and we're requiring it to be a studio, it's got to be at these sizes.
It can't be a closet.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we're saying. That's, you know, whether these are the right sizes or not can be up, open for discussion, but little two different things.
Okay, that makes sense. Sure, you're just holding them to a sort of.
Yeah.
Minimum. And then it says there's no maximum initial price on RO units?
Yeah, they're not.
They're not deed restricted in the price category. So, but then is there a maximum sale price? I, I mean. Total free market.
Yeah, on the RO. Sure, I just was connecting to that.
Cary Grove has some hybrid ones that are referenced in here, but that's, that's a different deal.
And to the point on, um, you know, pushing, pushing development out of Carbondale, I had a builder tell me two weeks ago that it's cost $50,000 more to build a home inside the boundaries of Carbondale than to build the same size home immediately outside. And that a lot of his, um, customers, people that he's building for are opting for up Missouri Heights and other things for that $50,000 savings that is directly tied to our green building code. So I think our green building code is, is really good. The buildings that have developed under it are phenomenal. Um, I, I think one of, you know, in, in my own study of sustainability, there's, there's three parts. There's an economic part, an environmental part, and, and the human part, the equity part. And so when we have, when we have sustainability goals that are maybe, you know, that are, are what is built into the green building code, but that is leaving out the, the effect on, um, affordable housing, you know, I mean, cost of building was, was a key point in the housing forum of why it's so hard for people to participate in the housing market. And so for me to say that it's okay to drive up the cost of building $50,000 for a green building code, but it's not okay to drive up the cost for affordable housing and inclusion, I think misses the boat on part of the purpose of why we want to keep things sustainable and good. You know, I, I just feel like there's a, a balance in there where it can potentially drive up the cost. There's a cost that's worth it that is not prohibitive, you know? And, and I, um, you know, I, I don't know if, if people are ready to look at the green building code and see if there's ways that it could be, um, adapted to not be so onerous and drive, um, development out.
You know, I think when we look at adopting the next round of building codes in general, that, that's a discussion ahead of, I think what we hear internally, um, at the staff side is where we see people say, oh, it's too expensive to build in Carbondale. They're just looking at the really larger homes, not ones which would, you know, that 3,500, 4,000, 5,000 square foot home.
Across that threshold.
Which triggers the higher level of, um, energy mitigation and stuff. The, the standard energy codes, we get a little pushback on, but they're, they're pretty standard now. It's the specialized stuff when you go above that threshold where we get some.
5,000 feet.
Yeah.
Is that our threshold? I mean, houses of that size have so many things that they generate. And they do generate employment. They should build affordable houses. They should be actually held accountable. Those of you, I mean, Biggity County did an extensive study on house size and employment generation, and they found that in the 3,500 and 3,700 range, if you get over that, it just triggered a whole level of staffing and, 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 and whether it's gardening or, or snow shoveling or, um, providing food for the people who live there, the cooks, the, the whole thing became, it was just suddenly, it was a totally different level of impact on the community. So if in fact a $5,000 foot threshold gets people building houses in the 3,500 foot range, it is having a, a positive effect on, on at least, you know, kind of those low level wage employees who don't have to come to Carbondale to service those homes from beyond.
We'll, we'll look at that in the proposal that, that we're getting. We're, you know, what we're finding is a lot of people are doing the same work at the same time, so it's a little more challenging to get.
So I think what would be helpful, especially with our time constraints and that we're beyond the guideline discussion, which this is all helpful, I think. And there's other things. I know AJ would like us to talk about cohousing, a few other, um, issues as well. Um, I'd like us to be able to have staff go forward, figure out who we're going to get on board to run this analysis, but also on a strategy on how we can get a task force going. Report back to us as far as. back to us as far as what maybe bullet points, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna run the gamut from cohousing to restricting Airbnbs to making sure people have their units maintained? Or are we gonna refocus that even further down, distill it down for this task force? But I think that would be the most logical next step and then go from there, because we.
I also thought it'd be helpful if just we could work with the housing authority to do the basic update to our guidelines, change the, you know.
The rotary phone in 12 months, yeah.
The basic cleanup, raise it to the, the full-time residency for the RO, that, that type of thing, and we can work on that with the housing authority and bring you something back on that front.
So it's 12 months agreeable?
That's the, the general consensus that I heard and we'll have staff bring back an updated draft, cleaning up some of this language for this particular item, but then also let's get moving on a, a subcommittee moving forward. It won't take away from some of the issues that we fleshed out with the UDC of topics, but overall, how do we wrestle with this monster of affordable housing? And I think we need to have that list and then see if we need to distill it down and then get people moving on that, if folks are comfortable on that.
One other note that Alan's comment reminded me of is that there are some cities and municipalities that require staff quarters if houses are above a certain threshold too, so I don't know if that's another aspect of the, the study that's gonna be done.
Okay, are people comfortable with that? Thanks. We're not gonna solve it tonight, but we'll keep working on it, it's not going away anytime soon. The next item on our agenda is a Chamber of Commerce request for funding for Ride the Thanks ladies for being patient.
Thank you for having us.
And for including things in our packet.
Yes.
I don't know if Andrea, if you wanna update, quick overview, we saw what the budget is and that was helpful.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So my name's Andrea Stewart, I'm the Executive Director at the Carbondale Chamber of Commerce and Kelsey Nichols is with us and she is one of our board members. I wanna introduce your business.
Oh, I think you have, like, familiar with my business, but I finally get to come before you want something a little more fun.
So, I'll just go ahead and get started. Ride the Rockies came to us earlier this year, asking if we could do them a large favor in having host Carbondale, or having host Ride the Rockies for the first time in Carbondale. This is the first time in 31 years of the Ride the Rockies event that Carbondale will host and it's the second time that will serve as an overnight host, so it's a really big deal, it's a great opportunity, and this is why, just to put it out there, when we came to you before in regards to funding, this was not on the docket, because we were not yet informed of that. It's a ride that is a lottery, it caps at 2,000 riders with over 100 volunteers as well as support staff, so it could bring up to 2,500 people. The median age is 50, it's, I would say about 70% of those riders are from the Front Range and then the remaining is throughout the country and then they do have some international riders as well. It's a great economic driver for Carbondale, I'll let Kelsey talk about that a little bit.
Sure, we talked about it in the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting and there was a lot of excitement for, we have a lot of bikers in our community, as we all know, but I think it could bring a lot of business and then visibility for Carbondale as well, not just for the ride for this weekend, but people who maybe haven't been here before and wanna come back for a weekend or where consider, you know, maybe even moving here. And so, the, the business owners were pretty supportive of it and then I think Andrea, it might be helpful to talk a little bit, there's a community grant that comes with being a sponsor of the ride as well.
Sure, so Ride the Rockies generates each year, overall, within the week ride, week-long ride, they generate 1.5 million dollars in tourism and as a community give back, each of the overnight hosts have the opportunity to receive a $5,000 grant and that grant, it's a full application and it's based on literacy, so we've actually sent it out to a number of entities in Carbondale to apply for that grant, so each overnight town can receive that grant. And then we're also working with an entity called Wish for Wheels and they select one community throughout the entire race route to build and provide bikes for underprivileged youth. So we're really working with them in hopes that we can bring that program to Carbondale. So we're very excited about that. As you can see in the packet, we've included the budget. As part of the overnight hosts, we are asked to create an entertainment venue. So the headquarters site will be at Roaring Fork High School and then the entertainment, entertainment venue will be at the Fourth Street Plaza and we're hoping really to just make a great turnout for Carbondale. It was meant to be, we didn't have anything on the weekend, so Ride the Rockies volunteers come in on June 10th, which is a Friday, the entertainment would be June 11th, Saturday, and then they leave, they do a fun ride towards Glenwood and then they go up and around en route to Aspen and that's their ride on Sunday. So it's a great opportunity for them to spend money, stay in Carbondale, have fun, get a sense of the community, and then they will actually leave via Main Street on Sunday. So it's a great opportunity, they're here, they're gone, and it's a great economic driver for us, so.
Just one other point, so they change the route every year, so it would be kind of a one-time opportunity for Carbondale to be the starting point and be on the route this summer?
Yeah, no, great, I think the information you provided in the packet is very helpful, especially to see where this request would go. I'd like to hear from other board members, but I am completely supportive, I think that this is one of those rare opportunities. It was interesting at the squirm night last night, one of the candidates mentioned, oh, it'd be great if people come and travel to Carbondale, you know, visit, have a great time, leave their money and then go, go back home, don't necessarily move here, but, so we all know that there's, there are some issues that arise from Carbondale being on the map, but.
That wasn't me.
No, it wasn't Alan, sorry, I didn't mean to insinuate, just because you're sitting here too. But as far as supporting our businesses, continuing with our base camp and overall recreation tourism theme, this is, I think, money well-spent, not only with the grant for literacy and other things that can give back to our community, that heighten awareness, but it just, it really speaks to our ethics and what Carbondale's all about. The fact that this was short notice and other people weren't as welcoming, that's their choice, but part of Carbondale is, you know, we wanna be welcoming and we wanna let folks know that this is a place that you can come and have a great weekend, have a nice experience, maybe we'll, you know, let you move here, just as a joke, we don't really have a criteria, but a few of us have thought about it. So I'm fully supportive, I think this is, this could come out of some of our contingency and is one of those rare opportunities that we don't get to see. It's a well-run event, it's not something that we're gonna have to be cleaning, we'll have cleanup, not quite the cleanup that we've seen with other events. We won't see, you know, a, an event where, you know, the hayfield catches on fire and we have this rowdy band go nuts like we've had in the past, I think this will be a positive thing. So I'm fully supportive, would like to see us find the money and, and allow for, whether it be the police department, public works and other town staff assist as needed, especially since it's a quieter weekend and the fact that the route was changed, kind of the J. Harrington Route, I think that'll give a good visual for people going up over Missouri Heights and highlight the college and a few other areas I think people bypass when they're in this valley. So I'm, I'm fully supportive and excited and hope that my fellow colleagues will join me in that. Alan?
I think this is a great event, so what a cool thing to have happen.
Thank you.
So thanks for being out there and being available for them when they needed us and bringing it to us. I'd move approval of $5,000.
Second.
There's a motion by Alan and a second by John to allow for the $5,000 to come from the town, right, that's what you're asking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just was looking at a few other numbers. Any further discussion, Pam?
Yeah, so I, I kinda brought the same issue up the last time a bicycle event came through and we helped sponsor it and I imagine you'll be selling the beer?
We do sell the beer.
And you don't have that in your budget?
So, and I appreciate that and I took your comments as, as we've discussed for previous requests into account when I made this, so you'll notice, the cantina supplies, that's more of the tent chairs and tables that we need for that and then we also have the, I put in separate line item, the beverage costs and you'll see the beverage cost amount is $2,000 and the Carbondale Chamber and Tourism Council is able to contribute that 2,000, so I wanted to take that out of that budget so that you could kinda see that the town's funds wouldn't go specifically towards the keg cost, if you will.
Okay, and so what's gonna happen with the revenue that's probably generated off of the sale of the beverages?
Yes, so the way that we've written the budget and at the request of Ride the Rockies, the Carbondale Chamber is the coordinating entity for the Carbondale event, so in lieu of our 100-plus coordinating hours and the volunteers and putting the event together, those proceeds will go towards the Tourism Council and the Chamber as our fundraiser.
Can I request that they go towards the Tourism Council specifically to help spread the word about our community from a tourist lens?
Sure, and I, and I love that idea, I think that's a great opportunity, the reason we do both, it's more of a 50/50, if five Chamber Board members are volunteering and five Tourism Council members are volunteering, then we just split the pot, but we could definitely.
I just think it's a great fundraising opportunity for the Tourism Council to continue to drive the message that we are a recreation-rich environment and come on down.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to that, thank you for that.
Thanks Pam, Katrina, Ed Hinnup.
I think this is a really wonderful thing and I think, you know, that number of people coming through and kind of are really, I mean, they're on bicycles, not cars, so I love the sort of scale of impact with bringing a group that large and promoting cycling. I think the whole thing is really wonderful, I'm supportive, I think, you know, in, in the past, and I've talked with Jay about the sort of impact after we see one of these events go through and how there's stacks of bicycles outside of all the businesses and coffee shops and it seems like it's been really, really great. The only thing that I, that comes up for me in this is that we are giving $5,000 to this event and I agree that it is in our sort of town character and who we are and who we wanna be, but also we're not wanting to give money to the Dandelion Day event that came before us. And for me, there's part of me that feels like we're good to support this for certain reasons, but not that, and so I just, I guess I'm feeling like there's a, a change in equity where this makes sense because it is an economic driver, but once again, that's only one aspect of our whole community. So I'm supportive of this and I'm not saying I don't wanna do this, I'm just saying I maybe would like us to look at how we are supportive of those events, because this is, you know, it's like almost, this is like a no-brainer and I think this is really good for the community, but I guess I'm just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we are being equitable in where we're supporting events and, you know, especially where there's, you know, that comment on the, the cantina sales, I think was really appropriate to hone in on if there is gonna be a profit out of, you know, the event itself, where that sort of comes from. So I think this is wonderful, I just got a tiny, you know, bit of, you know, something bothered me about shutting that down, but wanting this and, and so, you know, that's what came up for me, but I'm, I'm completely supportive of this event, thank you.
Thanks Katrina, and had we been, I mean, we may in the future be presented with a budget from coordinators of Dandelion Days to have us support it and we haven't had that or that larger discussion, so, I mean, we definitely would weigh it, just like anything else I would assume with this board.
Cool, thank you.
We're really fortunate, the Chamber is the lead group on this, because we don't have the internal capacity to both get the volunteers and manage the event. We have our roles in this and we've been working at the town level since the day Ride the Rockies contacted the Chamber, but it's pretty defined roles, what we're doing and what they're doing and we couldn't organize it, we don't have an event coordinator on staff who could put this event together with the time that the Chamber staff is, and plus, this was a really last-minute thing, it was an all-hands-on-deck to try to make this happen because of circumstances with surrounding communities.
Yeah, and I, I fully appreciate, to dovetail off of what Jay said, the Chamber stepping up, not just the board and staff, but this was very close to not happening for us and I think the, the cost-benefit analysis is one that it pencils and, and I, you know, am supportive of whatever we need to do with the cantina, but I also know that there's a lot of planning that goes into this whole project and, you know, those hours have to come from somewhere. So I, I'm comfortable with the Chamber and Tourism Council being in this role and I, I don't foresee this coming back around and if it is planned for future, you know, it may be a different discussion based on need. So with that, are there any other comments from the board on this motion by Alan and second by John?
I just wanted to make clear that I, I think this is epic and I wanted to thank you, you know, I know it kind of like digressed to another issue, but I just think this is really great, so thank you.
Thanks Katrina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 7-0, thanks ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thanks for bringing that up, Katrina.
So, the next item on our agenda are our formal, formal documents for the approval of City Market Ordinance Number Five, an SIA and an SGM letter. We, I know staff and applicants, partners have been working diligently to get these documents in front of us and refined, there are some changes as far, not of substance necessarily, moreover as, you know, timing of things like with landscaping being in place and a few other items, and so there's some redline copies at our desks. I will remind everybody that the public hearing on this, this application has been closed and so if there are things that this board feels that they want to add back in, we wanna make sure that we stick to the intent of what this, this procedure is for and where we're at. So with that, I don't know if it's Mark or Janet telling us, you know, show, let us know what the changes are and if we wanna start either with the ordinance or with the SIA, let us know where and what page, please.
Do you wanna go ahead and do that?
I'll let Mark do that.
No, Stacy already did.
Okay. We were working hard on these documents, you know, leading into your last meeting and in the time since, we provided them to the applicant team and received some comments, most of which were agreeable to us, and so we went ahead and made some edits. And I understand, you know, Eric Gross is here on behalf of the applicant team and in an email today indicated he's okay with these edits, you know, we'll go through them if anything comes up, obviously you can address those. The, the two documents, just the umbrella documents are an ordinance to approve a five-lot subdivision and then a condition of a sort of the ordinance is the subdivision improvements agreement, which I'm sure you've all looked at and, and, you know, is the document that the primary, it has some other conditions, but the primary purpose is to set forth what the required improvements are, what the schedule is, the amount of those improvements and how they're gonna be secured, so the town is guaranteed that they'll, they'll be completed even if, you know, the unexpected happens. There's, there's a letter of credit out there to guarantee their completion. So dealing with the ordinance first, Stacy, I don't know if you want me to just, just deal with the changes that have been made?
Just deal with the changes, then if the board has questions on particular topics, we can take that up next.
That'll be fine, on page one and again on page three.
We're doing ordinance first, I'm sorry?
Ordinance first.
Okay.
Sorry, on page one and page three of the document, I'm looking at these in paper and I guess you are too, so that's fine. We added net leasable space, as those of you involved in real estate know, that's how developers measure what they're gonna be able to sell to people as opposed to the exterior measurements of the building and that. I guess the 9,600 feet that we've been talking about for months was, was calculated that way and not as a gross exterior measurement, I didn't think it was material, so we went ahead and agreed to clarify that at the applicant's request. The, and the next change in paragraph three of the ordinance was actually just something I did, it wasn't requested, but just to clarify, the 90-day period, 90-day clock to record the plot would begin, assuming you pass the ordinance tonight, it would start tonight as the adoption of the ordinance as opposed to when it's effective, when an ordinance is effective, as you know, is 30 days after publication, which will be 40 days or something like that, so it starts the clock tonight, if you pass this.
And then also the two lane up above.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah, on page three.
Again, a detail that was requested by the applicant team, I hadn't even focused on whether it was a one or two lane, but we've clarified in a couple places that the proposed drive-through pharmacy has two lanes.
And that was what was part of the whole application process, so that didn't deviate from the public process?
Yes.
They're gonna have like the thing that goes, whoo, underground, like at the bank?
I don't know the answer to that, I haven't focused on that.
Can you do that again, Alan, that's pretty?
I haven't seen one of those in years. I know what you're talking about.
Well, it's more for staging, like during flu season, I remember when they specifically talked about that to allow people, so it didn't mess with the flow of the site, that they could kinda hang out and not idle, but be ready to pick up their prescriptions.
Hopefully.
Whether it's a pneumatic tube or not, I don't think we're sure, but there will be a delivery system coming in for the second lane.
Good.
On page five, again, another time. On page five, again, another timing clarification that the completion of the public infrastructure will be within two years of recordation of the final plat. So if for some reason we take the full ninety days to record a plat and you're recording a plat in June roughly, that it would be two years hence that the deadline for completion of the roads and utilities and all that kind of stuff would be. So it floats with the recordation date instead of saying in here an actual fixed date.
Okay.
And I think that's consistent with the terms and conditions that Janet's been recommending to P and Z and the trustees for months.
And can I just ask a question there?
Of course.
We don't care when it's initiated?
We do sometimes. Sometimes we very much encourage that. I had in prior drafts talked about initiating it within one year and that's been removed. That leaves the developer, I guess, at, you know, needing to schedule the initiation enough in advance to be able to complete it by the required deadline. It doesn't say what month you have to break ground.
Okay.
So is that it for the ordinance on the changes?
It is. Another thing Pam is that typically, especially in smaller subdivisions, we're usually doing like a one-year time period to complete public improvements after plat, not two years as we're talking about here.
Okay.
So usually we're, it is more important when you initiate than when you've got twenty-four months to plan.
Okay.
So the second document, the subdivision improvements agreement, also known as the SIA, similar changes for the most part, I believe. Page three, for instance, refers to the two-lane drive-through. Page four refers to net leasable space after the ninety-six hundred square foot reference. Page six includes the number that's from Yancey Nichols' cost estimate, two-point-seven million. That's also going to be reflected again about ten pages after this. This, the developer requested that we change this to say, it used to say was the fees were the obligation of the developer and it was requested to change that to lowercase applicant. You know, it doesn't really make any difference to the town whether the fees are paid by the folks who are going to build the grocery store or the owner of the property. So rather than delineate that here, I think that can be dealt with between the private parties who are putting this project together. This just simply says that the fees will have to be paid to the town before we're going to sign this document. And so.
They can figure out who.
They can figure out who is the way it's worded. If you have concerns about that, you could ask questions, I suppose, tonight, but that's the way it reads right now.
Have they figured out who?
Yeah. It's not going to be a problem.
This is probably the, the next thing I'll address on page thirteen and a couple other pages is probably the most significant substantive change that came out of the applicant's request. We have this two-year timeline to complete all the public improvements, which are, you know, everything, streets and ditches and irrigation systems, landscaping, curb and gutter, you name it, including landscaping of public, certain public rights of way. And I think partially because the project could possibly be staged so that it, most items are completed in the winter, as you're seeing with Thompson Park right now, landscaping in order to make sure that it's really in place and established and operable can't be done during the winter. And so there was a request to possibly, it's not a certainty, but possibly allow for landscaping to be separately accepted after all the other improvements are completed and accepted. So basically, the concession the town would be doing here is usually we like to have public improvements all at once because then we have a warranty that runs for a fixed time period on everything and we don't have to do dual tracking. And we don't like to have, you know, tracking of many, many, we wouldn't want to accept a curb on January first and a gutter on January ninth and have two-year periods that are running from all these different dates. It's just a nightmare. But here, because it's just landscaping, landscaping is a fairly small piece of the overall public improvements in terms of dollars and there is a real seasonal constraint. This reads so that if requested by the developer, the town would agree to have two different timelines, that we would accept everything but the landscaping on a certain day and then start the warranty then and have warranty security. And then possibly, if they requested, allow the landscaping to be separately accepted and warranted for a two-year, actually, it's a two-season period that would commence at a later date. And so it allows for the possibility of, let's say, a February twenty-eighteen acceptance of streets and roads and all that kind of stuff and then a June twenty-eighteen acceptance of landscaping with two seasons to make sure the grass and the trees take. And I added a provision that says if trees or shrubs are diseased or die during that warranty period that they'll be replaced.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, Mark. And it's almost what we've done with Thompson Park and other areas, but not making them come back and ask to change it.
Yeah, this is.
I mean, this is, we already are doing this.
To the amendment.
Right.
We're experiencing, just coincidentally, we're experiencing another project in reality right now. So, you know, the dual tracking, especially if it was, like I said, ten or twelve different dates and times, I would be in here waving arms and saying, I really don't think Renee and the staff are going to want to deal with that. It's going to be a huge pain. But to have two steps instead of one and two potential securities instead of one, I think it's probably, this is such a big project.
And it may run benefit to the town's benefit. We don't want them to be installing landscaping in the middle of the winter and before the irrigation can be tested. We just ran into a situation where irrigation is not on, trees are in, you know, right after the end of the season last year. So this is actually better for us to get a good product out there if they request it. If the timing aligns, then it's fine.
Yeah, even our own highway project, we have some, quite a bit of plant material that needs to be replaced. Janet?
Just real quick, and kind of the difference with this one than other developments, it says, "No CO shall be issued within the development until full completion of all public improvements." So in other words, if they have everything in but landscaping in January, they want to be able to get a CO for the grocery store. So that's what was explained to me and that made a lot of sense.
Okay. John, you had a hand up about this topic?
How do we determine the value of the landscaping irrigation?
We would have engineers looking at, you know, there's an engineer's estimate that was in your packet last time that has line items, so the initial estimate is there. But because some of it is still subject to potential revision, actually, John, I don't think I noted this when we passed by it earlier, but I also added a provision that allows for the town, building inspector or engineer to request changes to the plans and specs. And so it's basically based on an estimate, but at the time of acceptance, the town engineer has authority to look at what was done and to require security. If landscaping's not done and the engineer says it's going to cost fifty-five thousand dollars to do it, then we can withhold that much, the letter of credit, until it's actually accepted and we get a warranty on it.
Pam, you had a hand up on that?
Is it worth defining the growing season as sometime in the late fall in order to make sure that they get all the way through the summer?
I, we certainly could. I think around here, I would generally say that the season runs from roughly April one or April fifteen to October fifteen, you know, in that kind of range.
Yeah.
Because that's the irrigation.
We normally use the irrigation season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To add that, if the board were.
Just so that it can be very clearly understood what we.
That wouldn't be objectionable to you guys. So if you'd like to clarify growing season, you know, per end, April one to October thirty or something like that, you know, we'd do that.
Yeah, okay.
And if they're amenable, I think that's a pretty easy fix that at least allows what that growing season is.
I don't want to get into a argument over dead trees in September.
The key is the two full growing seasons extend through October.
I'd say October thirtieth because November's good too, a lot of years.
But if they don't have the water, it depends on the irrigation.
So it needs to extend through October thirtieth of the second season is the point.
Right, so if November first, they all die the third year, that's just how it goes. Not saying that that'll happen. AJ, did you have a hand up or were you just, okay. So mark that. I think we're pretty clear on what that changes will.
You do want two seasons to watch it, so it could be longer than two years, actually.
Depends on the timing.
It does depend on the timing. So it would be two full growing seasons extending from April one to October thirtieth.
That's my understanding. Is that yours as well, Eric? Okay.
We were thinking that it might be better for everybody, especially since.
To have a date.
My clients have to come back in and ask for amended SIA because of landscaping issues.
Yeah, those landscapers.
On page sixteen, there's a lot of redlines that really just combine to alter the security provisions to allow this two-step process for public improvements. Most public improvements, as I call them, and then landscaping to be separated. So it says a pod acceptance of a hundred, a hundred percent of the public improvements, parentheses, or all public improvements other than landscaping. So it was just a whole bunch of changes to accommodate what we did a minute ago.
Can I ask why we increased from eighty to ninety percent?
That is a good, that was requested by the developer. You know, with two-point-seven million in financial terms, you're talking about ten percent being two-hundred-and-seventy thousand and twenty percent being five-hundred-and-forty thousand, I guess. Is that right? I think so. And so it is a fairly substantial difference, but because of the magnitude of the project, you know, two-seventy is a lot more than if we had twenty thousand. And so I think it's just economics that the developer's hoping not to tie up that capital for that extended period. So we've agreed to that request, but that's certainly in the board's discretion if that leaves.
And you're comfortable with that much?
It's really more of an engineering, timing, cost issue than a legal one. It's not illegal to go from eight to ninety.
Right, but just in the scope of reality.
But, you know, Chris Lerman's looked at this and he, I believe, is comfortable with that. But, you know, again, ten percent of, it leaves you with, if you, when you get to the end, you don't have, you don't have to release below two-seventy. But of course, if something's not complete or there's defects identified during inspection, you never get to two-seventy. You keep it above that until you want to go there.
And we're not talking, we're talking about the letter of credit in the form that we're most comfortable with typically.
Yeah, not a bond situation?
Not some crazy.
Thankfully, nobody's asked for a bond at this point.
Yeah, great.
This agreement does not contemplate a bond.
It doesn't. The last change, number twenty-one, was just to add another individual as a co-manager alongside Briston Peterson, a guy named Scott Miller.
Does Scott Miller know he's been added?
I don't really have to ask Eric that.
Briston asked me to add him, so I can't confirm that he, that he knows.
I haven't talked to him.
He's only, I think he's only added as.
We could add a few more, we could add a few more people.
That's right. He is adding the notice provision.
Not signing the actual documents, the notice.
That's right. So those are, and all the exhibits that were attached.
In the packet, stay the same.
Last week, I believe, those have not changed.
Those have not changed.
All the what, I'm sorry?
All the exhibits that are in our packet and were part of the review.
That were not attached, okay.
Correct.
Yeah. So overall board questions, Alan, or comments?
So we talked about when, when did the money going towards the roundabout.
Oh, it's twelve.
Twelve years.
I proposed.
Not have questions from our boarders while we're doing this, please. Thank you. So we talked about.
Having heard your discussion last week, I put in, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, I put in, I think it says twelve years after building permit.
After building.
And that, that was presented to the developer team and they have not asked that it be changed. So that's what it says.
Yeah. So we, we hit that timeline?
And with additional clarification being that if there is a refund, if the town has not found a way to use those funds by that time and there's not some other kind of an agreement, then any refund would go to the then-owner of Lot Two, which is where the grocery store will be.
Okay.
It's not to the developer because we don't know who will own lots one through five at that point.
It doesn't go to Scott Miller.
We said it's going.
Poor his heirs.
It's going to whoever owns the City Market parcel.
Yeah, maybe he, he'll own it, I don't know. Pam?
So I just, on the ordinance, kind of in line with that, on page two, where it's saying, "The Board of Trustees finds and determines that the special use permit application for the fueling station should be granted with the conditions for the following reasons." I just sort of disagree and I just want it to be sort of articulated about point F, G, and H that, you know, that it will create a nuisance and such impacts shall be borne by the owners with consideration to a pedestrian crossing. I think that this, maybe not the fuel station itself, but this whole development. So perhaps my comments are not actually accurate with that point in mind because the fuel station may not generate that much pedestrian crossing. But I just want to reiterate that, you know, I think that pedestrian crossing is actually going to be a problem because of the development of this property. And I know CDOT is at play, so it, you know, people in this room might be on board with a pedestrian crossing, but I just want to make another statement on the record that I think it's imperative that we get a safe bicycle pedestrian crossing somewhere at the entrance to this facility.
I know, and I appreciate you bringing that up to have it be on the record because we did, you know, this, these conditions are the ones that were approved and so that's what memorialized. But I think as far as moving forward, we have those conversations with CDOT, this will be helpful to say that that was still a concern.
I'm on page two and three of the ordinance. And I think, just for the record, point H, the project is in scale with existing neighborhoods or will be considered to be in scale with the neighborhood as it develops. I don't think the number of pumps at this facility are at all in scale with anything existing in this community and I just want that to be stated on the record as well. But I disagree with H.
The, if I might say.
Go ahead, Mark.
The A through J, they're tweaked a little bit, but they more or less mimic what the municipal code requires us to find for special use permit. And so to simply change these findings, to state them in the opposite, is not compatible with the neighborhood, all of a sudden we've got a problem. You're certainly free to vote as you see fit on the entire ordinance and we could adjust findings, you know, on a fact basis if the board as a whole would like to do that, but we can't, you know, reverse these findings without finding that we couldn't issue a special use permit.
Yeah, I just think the number of pumps is going to have a big blowback on other establishments.
And remember, the special use permit is only for the fueling facility.
Right.
The word project may be slightly misleading here. In this particular sense, what that means is the fueling facility, not City Market and everybody else.
Right. Thanks Pam, Alan?
So, and just, you know, and you might have said it and I didn't hear it, but was that money for the roundabout combined with the money for pedestrian crossing and it can be used either way?
Either way.
If you look on, H on page six calls out that it's combined together and can be used for pedestrian crossing.
Other questions on the ordinance or comments from the board? Ask Katrina.
I would like to get a feel for what our approach is for the pedestrians crossing and how, you know, how we can facilitate that and prioritize that and what the kind of plan that that is.
What we'll probably do is upon the applicant pulling a building permit, we will commence a meeting with CDOT with their access coordinator and traffic engineers and start having that discussion on where they think the logical location would be. You know, worst case, they say, "We won't look at it until you actually demonstrate the need and we have people in the road," but we would start that discussion much earlier. We had a similar meeting a week ago with the whole issue with Ross and school zones and stuff and brought everyone to the table. It took us six months to get them to the table, but we did have that, that discussion. I think we initiate this one at building permit stage.
And so if they say you have to prove the need, do we have any recourse or we just have to wait it out?
The recourse would be political in nature.
Which we've, we've used at times.
Yes.
Political in nature.
Yeah, I mean, there's, well, and, and other neighboring jurisdictions have used it with a bigger hammer with, you know, the two lights of buttermilk. There's no reason to have two lights of buttermilk, so just saying that.
We want it bad enough.
We've got Tom Norton's stuff, like he did it on behalf of the Elmera Creek Club.
Yeah.
That's why that intersection is so screwed up.
Yeah, well, send him.
Norton Memorial.
Yeah, he's not on my Christmas card list.
I don't know if he's dead, but he is. It does commemorate him, so.
The slug of Maglority, drug in public, drank in public, did not do him any.
So other, any other questions on the ordinance or the SIA? AJ?
I have a change I'd like to see in the SIA, page eleven, number five, construction management. The last sentence says, currently says, "After construction is completed, all soils that are disturbed during construction shall be reseeded, irrigated to reestablish vegetation, and thereafter kept reasonably free of noxious weeds." I would like to see the word "reasonably" removed from that. So it says thereafter kept free of noxious weeds. And then also, if we have a weed management plan, by then, have it in regards to our weed management plan, or if we will not have one by then, say that they will be kept free of noxious weeds without the use of toxic herbicides and pesticides.
So Janet, as far as the reasonably free of noxious weeds, that's pretty standard language in all of our other agreements. I don't know if that's derived from the code, or if that's just something that we've.
It's really something that I've used, not, you're right, it's been in other agreements, other projects, you know, when we've had, especially when, coming through the recession, when we were worried about projects that were abandoned, like Mountain Sage. So that's my language, not Janet's. I don't think it is a code basis. I, I don't think removal of the word "reasonably" would be a legal problem. And AJ, I think you understand this, but just to be clear, in, in case anybody doesn't, that the, this provision applies to the entire site, you know. It's, and we have the right, as the town, to tell our public works crews not to use herbicides on our property. But at this point, we obviously haven't passed an ordinance, you know, to, to require the same of private property owners. And if this applies to their private property, they could agree to that. You know, Eric might, may or may not be able to respond to whether they would. But I just wanted to clarify that as written, this is kind of the entire site, and there may be a difference. And if you wanted to talk about, you know, what we're going to do on irrigated areas that the town will maintain versus what the developer's going to take care of.
Yeah, and I, I'm comfortable with the, if we, if kept, kept free of noxious weeds is, is amenable, that's fine, because we can enforce certain things. I mean, the town doesn't even enforce it upon our own selves with noxious weeds. But as far as the restriction of herbicides, I, I won't take, I mean, I don't support that insertion. Not that I don't support the overall arching message, but unless we're going to do it townwide, I, I don't want to impose this just on this one development. I don't think that's fair. But if the, the board and through the, the weed committee comes through and says, "This is, these are our standards, and this is what we're going to impose." This is a property within the city limits. This would then fall under that, it's not like it's grandfathered in. It's just, this is the construction management part. So similarly to, you know, the HOA at River Valley Ranch, and they have a, a contract for their weed plan or, or maintenance. You know, some of that stuff would fall under that. So that's where I would work towards more of a broader town approach than inserting here. So that's why I'm not support, I mean, I'm supportive of looking at how we can treat nuisance and noxious weeds without the use of chemicals. But to just impose it on this property, I think, is, is way onerous personally. Katrina?
I just wanted to say that I support a potential restriction ban or permitting system on, on pesticides in the future that are endocrine disruptors and neurotoxins, which I think are the ones that you're talking about, AJ. I do think we're taking out the word "free" could inadvertently force them to spray poison all over the whole area if they're, if they have an absolute hard line of.
Oh, to keep it reasonably. Oh, okay.
Yeah, to take out, right, to take out the word, because then they have this.
I don't know all the interests for sure, but I have a lot of history dealing with the town, the noxious weeds and the metal creek issues. And so that's where that language comes from, is a recognition that sometimes a little flexibility is needed if you don't want somebody to use pesticides. But I leave, it's up to you guys. This will also would not exempt, if, if a future board, in the next eighteen months, when they're doing this project, were to pass some sort of a townwide ordinance that required licensed applicators or permits, or even banned it, if, if you wanted to go that far, there's no exemption in here. You know, if, if there is a townwide legislation, like Stacey's talking about, that this doesn't, you don't have to abide by it.
Then I'd like to keep reasonably in there for that reason.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Okay.
I will say, though, because of the size of this project, I think it is important to keep the use of dangerous chemicals to a minimum. I mean, even though it's not something that we expect other entities to do, but just because of the scale and scope of what could go on, it's worthwhile to try to avoid the use of those as much as possible. Especially anything that would be sprayed and then become airborne. But there's not a lot of folks living around there. I know the CRM Garden is quite a distance away, but they, they could potentially be negatively affected.
Thanks, Pam. John, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, it is private property unless we ban it throughout the entire town. The chemicals are going to, they could be used there.
Outside the stormwater detention area, there's not a lot of exposed landscaping there. I mean, just open areas, which could be weed issues once construction's well underway.
It's all going to get paved anyhow.
That's what I was trying to say.
Any other comments on the SIA? So it sounds like those changes aren't going to be made, but we'll work through the weed committee on if there's a townwide issue or whatever. But that's a different discussion for a different night. Any other questions or comments on the SIA ordinance, number five, on that? And Eric, you guys are amenable to the suggested changes?
Yes.
Okay. John?
Moved to approve ordinance number five in the SIA for the Carbondale Marketplace subdivision.
There's a motion by John and a second by Katrina. Further discussion?
Did we have public comment?
Not tonight.
I mean, we. Yeah, we closed the public hearing, but if anyone wanted to speak on the ordinance, they could. I mean, that, that has happened before. But I think with knowing that it's staff, members of the press, and I think an interested party for the next item, we're pretty safe. Unless there's a mad rush for the door.
Comment, you certainly may, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I usually, if someone's coming in and really wants to speak to the ordinance, I usually let them, just so we can hear it and be on the record. But for board comments, AJ?
Just wanted to clear, clarify that I'll be voting no against this for the same reasons I voted no against the City Market application in the first place last week, and that's because I feel like solar should be put on-site. Built environment is very permanent, once it goes in, and what seems cutting-edge now, I imagine to be twenty years from now, not even close to cutting-edge. If you look at Elgerbell City Market, same circumstance. So I would like us to see, be a little more progressive and cutting-edge with our building environment in pretty prestigious land that's in downtown Carbondale, that could be used to grow food, that could be used to house people, that could be used to create a more resilient job and economic development. And I understand why the board is voting in favor of this, and just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, AJ. And we, I appreciate your comments and all the board's comments previously. And the, I think the nice thing, one of the things that I welcomed with this project, and probably why it's gone through P and Z in the public process smoother than previous ideas, is this isn't a rezone. And so if we did want to have an ag, or we did want to have housing, that would trigger a rezone. So I also want to make it clear that this is the, what the property is zoned for, it is a subdivision and a special use permit. So it's not this bigger idea, the bigger idea is never, we, we couldn't, couldn't figure it out to where it worked for everybody. But I think for future, and I think your comments are very valid and important and timely for what's, what are next phases, and especially in regards to housing. There are other lots here, there are other possibilities, and there may be some rezones that come before this board on that. So, so thanks. Any other board comments on the motion?
Quick addition, I do ask if you could pass on to the applicant to look into solar on-site, as they said they were interested in talking to Cor and Clear, and whatever Kansas did to not get a Starbucks.
Thanks, AJ. Katrina, any hand up? No? Okay.
I'll pass that one.
Thank you.
So there's a motion by.
I just, I mean, if, if off-site solar produces more solar, isn't that better?
I look at it as.
I mean, they're, they're going to be our hugest consumer by a long shot in this community. It just seems like the more electricity we can keep them from running in a bad way, the better off we all are.
But big picture, off-site solar is like you going on a diet for me. And it does not address the need of being self-reliant and creating our own energy and using less. And I understand that for this project, in, in these times, that will create a greater net renewable energy. But if something does happen to that power source, we're not creating power here that can sustain us in the long run.
But they're all, if something happens to the off-site solar they buy into today, they're obligated to buy into another one or put it on the building. So if the current infrastructure were to disappear, they, they're not out of their commitment, correct? So I, I, I just think the more solar, the better, in a case like a building that's consuming massive amounts, but whatever.
And that is under the, not necessarily for this motion, but for the board's consideration for a commercial green building code and residential green building code. If we want to have higher expectations and have it on-site, that's a conversation we need to have outside of this particular.
Different set of documents.
Yeah, outside of just this one project. But it does bring up some, some ideas, for sure. Board comments, John?
It would be a glorious crown for the store to be able to see the solar panels up on the roof. It would really make a difference for a lot of folks in the town.
Only if they have the capacity to make sure they're operating right, because we put them on our building, and for years, they weren't functioning. And they're selling groceries, not maintaining equipment. I mean, that's just more expense to them as a business owner that operates in pretty small margins, really, to maintain something. Otherwise, they buy it off-site, get more, and they pay somebody else to do the total maintenance and oversight of it. So I, I just think, anyway, whatever.
No, either way it works. You're right.
Good. It's got to work.
Any other comments? I mean, I know that it's not maybe perfect in everyone's eyes, but this project and the potential here is, is overall a huge positive for our community in a lot of ways. I know that there will be some people that never want to see this kind of development occur, and there are other people that are, are fine with us living within our means. But to have a quality grocery store with, with products that are easily accessible, a partner such as City Market and Kroger to come to this community and offer this type of store has been pretty remarkable. And it, and it is a large part into what the community has said that we desire. I appreciate that this applicant has looked and said, you know, "We're, we're willing to do this, and this can be a great partnership." So I don't want us to lose sight of, of all the positives here. And on, on all fronts, our staff, the applicant's staff, and the community trying to envision a quality project for us, and, and one that's doable, one that private business can achieve, and one that we can accept as a community, instead of having it go somewhere that's, that's not attainable for us. So I appreciate everybody's work on this, and, and the applicant for coming forth. There's a motion by John and a second by, second by Katrina to accept, approve ordinance five and accept the SIA with the changes as noted, redlined in our packet. Kathy, would you please call roll?
Stacy Burnout?
Yes.
AJ Hobbs?
No.
Katrina Byers?
Yes.
Pam Zentmeyer?
Yes.
Frosty Marriott?
Yes.
Alan Harvey?
Yes.
John Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. All that motion passes six one. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Does that cover the ordinance too?
That covered both. His motion covered both areas. Wow.
And a special use permit.
And a special use permit, yeah, which was outlined in the ordinance. Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Eric.
Third time's a charm, right?
Yeah.
According to Ed, this is the fourth, though, right?
Fourth time.
Well, you know.
Who can keep track?
Depends on how we count.
He couldn't spell my name either. Can you, can you put that in the letter too, Frosty, when you illustrate all of his?
I have an E in my name, too.
Wrong facts, that he misspelled my name as well.
Exceptional.
Oh, your friend?
He's not my friend.
Oh.
Pam, he spelled my name wrong and Frosty's name wrong, too.
In the same document.
They're signing the ordinance.
You're kidding me?
You're Marriott like the chain. Are you going to stick around for the emergency ordinance?
I don't care which way you.
Do we need a, for?
We need everybody else to stay, if everybody else can stay.
We don't sign the SIA until we get the money in.
Yeah.
Do we have enough people for a?
Supermajority emergency ordinance if Frosty leaves? Yes.
Say no and make him stay.
It's not unanimous. Unanimous works. Need five.
We need five.
It's just an ordinance. There was no noticing. It's townwide, anyway.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is emergency ordinance, ordinance number six, which would place a temporary moratorium on the licensing of medical and retail marijuana establishments. This was brought up at our last meeting. Kathy?
So at about four oh five today, I had somebody come in with a MIP application, which is accepted because you had not passed the ordinance. They came in on Monday and took out the application, and they returned it today. So it would be located over in the ET Plaza. It would not be located where you are.
Okay. So are there any questions, Pam?
So what, can you illustrate, and maybe you did this last week, and I apologize I wasn't here, but where are we with reference to our caps?
We're only capped out with retail stores. I think this, the, the retail MIPS, I think, will be capped out. We also had King's Conservatory withdraw their application for their cultivation today. So I think we're at four for the retail cultivations. We have two medical cultivations, two, one medical store.
Yeah, one medical store, one lab.
And one lab. But I'm think, I'm wondering if we have two medic, uh, two medical rooms, if I didn't say that.
So in other words, due to cap constraints, what, how many of what type of facilities is this prohibiting from coming into play?
Well, four labs, three medical cultivations, four medical stores, and one retail cultivation.
So I sort of am under the assumption that anything in the medical world is kind of inactive, just because of.
No.
Retail?
Well, Steve Garcia just took out a medical MIP and a medical cultivation about two months ago.
So we've seen one in recent times.
Two medical MIP and a medical cultivation. So they're definitely not as popular.
And what do we plan to do in six months in order to make this more palatable to the community?
So the, basically, last week, Pam, we had three tenants from across this building, we had eleven oh one Village.
Yes.
Come in and talk about how their businesses were being impacted by that. They, particularly Cindy Wallace, who has the veterinary services, talked about customers who were bringing up the pot smell through the ventilation system. So I know that we sent John, John Plano over, maybe, or Labor, one of you guys went over and smelled, but.
All of them go.
We took. Go to Cindy's facility?
Yesterday, Plano did go out there. And then we, both of us went out there last week, too.
Cindy's, Cindy Wallace's business.
We didn't go to her business, but we walked around.
So anyway, the business owners complaining that they were receiving smells through the ventilation system in their business. At the same time, we had a set of proposed changes that would allow us to kind of look at, you know, maybe looking at overall neighborhood impacts as we deny an application, so that, as you're seeing in buggy circle, we've got a massive, is that King's? Is that the one that was going in buggy?
No, it was going over here. It was.
Right, so you've got.
Oh.
They withdrew.
They withdrew. That was continued to April. We didn't actually see it yet. That was going to be.
Yeah, you've got a kind of a concentration of grows over on buggy circle, including the old construction junction with a owner whose first statement was, "We're just going to pump this, pump the air right out the roof, out of the ceiling." I mean, it was kind of a complete oblivious as to the impacts of the smell of, you know, many thousands of plants. And then we had these owners come in and into this building, and they're saying, "Look, we are really being impacted by this." And my thinking was, and I'm the one who proposed the emergency ordinance, was that, that let's just, you know, we've got a lot going on. There's a lot of businesses that it's, it's going on right now. Let's take a minute, let's make sure that these caps make sense. Let's make sure that the, you know, the, that the language that Allison's bringing forward can be utilized in a way that lets us look at the overall impact on the neighborhood, maybe making a decision about whether to allow an application, and really just kind of have a, have a little bit of breathing time. We've, we've absorbed a lot of businesses. I think we have five, five MIPS, five retail, three medical. How many, how many medical outlets do we have? One?
Or what?
Sales of medical marijuana?
Stores or just, or cultivations, stores, one, two?
Or is there going to be two with a new grow? I think this one with a new grow, too.
There's two.
So two, and we've got, you know, how many retail grows do we have?
I think she said four.
Um, yeah, four. It would have been five with Kings, but.
We were up, we're up over like, you know, fifteen, sixteen, you know, if you throw the lab in, maybe seventeen businesses operating concerns in town. I, I don't think it's unfair to, to take a break and, on new applications, and really look at ordinances and look at the impacts on neighborhoods. And, and reopen it in six months, so.
Did I answer your question, Pam, kind of?
Right. What didn't get answered is what are we going to do in the next six months in order to?
It's more formalized. We started to talk, chip away at those items that Allison had brought forth. But because of the late hour and the immediacy of the need, like some of the, like the HVAC system, it's things we had contemplated. But from hearing from those tenants and business owners saying, "This is kind of unlivable right now," I mean, beyond that. Because I am definitely not one to entertain emergency or, ordinances or moratoriums without a little more thought on that. But we, I, I think that we have been moving along these lines, and we just need to solidify what those new regulations are going to be. I, I don't see this as putting a stop to all business for all time for other reasons. It's just, there is this undue concentration that's happening that is not fair. And I think this is one mechanism where the emergency. And I think this is one mechanism where the emergency ordinance should be effective.
And so we can't think of a way to address the concentration in that area?
Well, we've tried with the, with the distancing and stuff, but it, a lot of that already took effect when applications were already midstream. And so like this completed application today will go through the old regulation, but then today forward, if this should pass, we'll have a breather.
And so what's happening on this end of Main Street that doesn't seem to have anything happening on it, but it is an allowed area?
Well, it's been approved, but.
We have one store with a permit which is getting closer to opening.
Okay, the one that put the paper on the windows recently?
Yeah, they just, um, or painted it.
Yeah.
And is that moving forward or?
Yeah, they're getting, what they're going to do is, um, they're going to come to for a modification and, cause they have to come for renewal. And there's a really small space. I'm going to say if you're looking at the building, it's on the left and it's this tiny narrow space and then they have this huge space on the right and they're going to get rid of the one on the right and just use the tiny little.
Where the photography was?
Yeah.
Exactly. And I only ask these questions because I totally am empathetic with that neighborhood
and the concentration and I don't want to unrightfully put an end townwide to business development in areas where it might not be so burdensome on the neighbors.
Right. Well, one of the things we had discussed, as you recall, was we, you know, we look at, we looked at the zoning map and saw that there are areas where this can happen, but there's also other private entities like an HOA that have prohibited certain businesses from going in there. And those are things I don't think we contemplated. We thought that there is leasable space at certain areas and that we envisioned that it'd be scattered throughout town in certain other commercial places and it just hasn't happened. For a variety of reasons, but mainly, you know, it, the, trying to mitigate for just the impacts, the smell alone, to have that shared HVAC is just something I think we really need to look at. For sure. Mark, you had a hand up.
I did.
And then Ellen.
If the board isn't inclined to move forward on this tonight, I want to spend very little time of my comments. If you are going to move forward, I had two suggested edits to it, but they're, they're immaterial if you're not going to move forward.
Well, let's hear the two suggested edits.
Allison and I are still learning the new code lingo and, and her text says that we are under section so and so of the code and that should say articles. So that's a very minor edit.
Okay.
The second one is, she talked in general terms of licensing and I'm not sure what your discussion was last week, but I might suggest that you consider expressly exempting renewals, transfers and maybe even modifications if you want to go that far. But just saying licensing in general might leave somebody in doubt about whether they could renew.
So only new licensing?
Right.
Okay.
But, but yeah, in our conversation last week, it was more on new for all those categories.
Right.
Um, we didn't want to get into medical versus retail, manufacturing versus testing. We just wanted all new, right Ellen?
She caught all new licensing.
Yeah.
So I, we could make that change, I think.
I think new would solve it or you could also say, you know, that we are expressly exempting existing license, renewals, transfers and modification, I'll leave you because that could be a physical modification or enlargement.
Ellen, you had a hand up?
Well, I would, I would like to kind of maybe talk a little more about the physical modification enlargement, but I just want to say, and one of the reasons I think that I proposed the emergency ordinance is because I was also the one who proposed the 400 foot limits between grows and then we went through a standard ordinance process there. And in the, that, in that period between us having that conversation and then the thirty days before it went active, that application statement, the buggy works grow.
Concentration. And that led to the concentration?
It was actually, you know, addressed, it kind of came in right into place where I think got us thinking about that, that spread. So I, that's the reason I, I, I put this into an emergency ordinance because it goes into effect immediately. And, and we're, then we can have our conversation and we can make it six months. If we get done before then we can, we can overdo the ordinance as well and reopen the business. So that was my thinking there.
Thanks Ellen. John, you had a hand up and then Katrina?
Yeah, if we really wanted to resolve the problem at 111, uh, Stage Drive, Buggy Drive, we'd.
Or Village, sorry.
Village.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd get a blower door test to be put onto those buildings and if we, um.
But it's an HVAC problem, John. It's a connected HVAC.
Right. And a blower door test that failed and then they'd have to disconnect it, that they would have to treat it differently. It would be an expensive fix, but it would certainly get the vapors out. But, uh, I mean, if we have a, an emergency ordinance to require a blower door test after three complaints or on relicensing, I think would be a, a very good thing for us to do. Because that's where ninety percent, a hundred percent of the complaints come from, is the smell.
Thanks John. I, well, no, well, I, I just want to say, John, I appreciate, I think we all appreciate that you're trying to get to the root of the issue and, and point to some, some areas that are maybe needed to be addressed. But I think that if we, in my opinion, if we expand past the moratorium language, we might be going into waters that maybe we don't have the support for the emergency ordinance and we're constricting ourselves to that specific end where I think we need to take the, you know, hopefully it's not six months, but take the time to say, these are the standards, these are the regulations and now we're willing to open it back up. To me, the reason why I'm supporting this, which I rarely, if I usually can't stand emergency ordinances, it's mainly because I think the timeout is needed for kind of what Ellen had said. And so I don't want to distill it further, but I, I appreciate your comments on that. I don't know.
And we could add blower door tests to.
To the regulations, yeah. I mean, we might get there, just not through the emergency.
We'll be talking about the regs on the thirteenth. Allison will be back.
So you'll still get to bring that up, John?
Oh.
Which is good. Yeah. Katrina?
I'm glad we're going to be talking about the regulations and I think that ventilation is a very serious, probably most underregulated, regulated aspect of this industry. You know, there's a, I, I think almost an attitude that it can't be harmful, but in, in fact, the particulate that is produced in some of these very high volume, uh, businesses can be, you know, can be not healthy, can be a nuisance, can, you know, I mean, a veterinary clinic doesn't want that, that, uh, you know, projection of, of who and what they are kind of. I don't feel like, um, an emergency ordinance addresses the problem. You know, this, uh, building has, is a, a private property of its own right and they are taking in tenants and we're, you know, telling them basically by doing this what tenants they are and are not allowed. And I, you know, that's a difficult culture that there are businesses that completely disagree with one another's, you know, or at least one way of the function, you know? I, I think that's hard and it's hard that there is a concentration. We're a part of creating that concentration with our, our distancing requirements, you know? And, and that is compounded by other landlords that don't allow for this, but this building can't, could do that. And I, and I think it's, you know, troublesome that, that a large commercial property does not have an adequate ventilation system. And I think it is on us if we are not requiring protective ventilation in, in our businesses as, as they are. So I feel like our, you know, the distancing requirement and, and other things, we're, we're almost creating a problem and I, and I, so I agree that we need to look at it. I agree that we need to sort of clarify what our, our priorities are in our ordinances. And I think our ordinances are pretty well developed and advanced and we are learning as we're going. You know, a lot of other municipalities look to our ordinances when they're even considering allowing these types of uses. So I take very seriously the way that we've done this and our, our careful consideration of it. I feel like a, um, a moratorium does in a way shut down this sort of growth that our community and this board has agreed on. And, and maybe, you know, there is a different feeling that we don't want to develop in that way or something like that. But retail is relatively unaffected, like it sounds like there can be one more, one more retail store. And so we're, so we're, you know, shutting down, um, potential medical facilities and, and then, you know, alternative, the MIPS, you know, that are not necessarily, I mean, they're different. They have a whole different function, not that they don't produce similar problems depending on what they're doing. But, um, you know, I, I, from, from what I'm hearing, you know, this is, this is a complaint coming out of this building, kind of, that is unique to that building, but how, having a townwide moratorium on a, a right that our, our community and the larger community has, has said that they want, you know, I mean, we, we have our caps, we have our spacing, we're trying to see what's working and, and as things are going, you know, I think we're, we can see whether these things are working or not, whether our caps are working, which maybe they're not, whether our spacing is working. But I think a, a moratorium doesn't allow that to be clear or that it's already clear that it's not working, you know? I mean, there is a concentration and, and, and so I, I hesitate to do an emergency moratorium because I, I'm, I don't think it solves the problem that is causing the complaint. I think that is a regulation and I think we do, you know, we do need to step up and regulate in particular the air quality issue on a whole other level because I think it's inadequate. But I, I don't necessarily feel like we should shut down this aspect of economic development because these, these businesses are, are valid in our, our town, are contributing to our tax base, are creating jobs, you know, there's, there's many positives and, you know, I'm not saying there's no negatives, but I, I think that the regulation of those negative impacts is on us. And I don't necessarily think we need a moratorium to, you know, effectuate those. I think we can move forward on those and, and, you know, hopefully as quickly as possible so they can be retroactive and, and relieve the situation that we, we've inadvertently created. Although, I mean, I'm remembering in each one of those licenses, a discussion on not wanting to get air complaints and how they need to take responsibility for their air quality. And, you know, I think maybe we've been very nice, like suggestive in telling them we don't want that, but having some hard, very specific ventilation criteria that maybe Picken County has already made some progress on or something like that is good. So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not completely against it, but I do hesitate to sort of stop this, you know, the way that it's progressing because I don't think it necessarily answers the problem. So that's my, my thought on it.
Thanks Katrina. A.J.
I think this is great use of an emergency ordinance that will help protect our citizens who were in place long before marijuana was legalized. And there were some pretty heavy complaints that both of you guys missed last week that were very influential. And I think that we can flush out all those details while we have a moratorium that will, in my opinion, no, not hinder the marijuana industry at all. There will be people chomping at the bit if we allow them. So I don't see it as a roadblock and we can hash that out April thirteenth. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number six with the updates that Mark provided.
Thanks A.J. Is there a second to A.J.'s motion? Hold on one sec. We'll get to the particulars.
Well, I'll make a second, but I would like to actually make it new licenses rather than.
Right. So the clarification is new licenses and adding some language about the exemption of renewals. Do we need that dual layer?
I think new is fine.
Okay.
As long as the board is okay with, that means that all three of what I named, transfers, renewals and modifications would still be processed by the town.
Right. So A.J., is that your?
We want to allow modifications. We need to have an exemption.
The one modification we anticipate is a downsizing, so I would caution you.
I don't have any dog in the fight. Either way is fine, but it's.
So A.J., as far as your motion?
Well, we can, do we make that decision as a board or is that a, a staff decision on a modification?
It's whether you include it in this ordinance.
Comes to you as a public, any.
Any modification comes back to us. So it means that, well, two things. If, if we said that, that modifications were not exempt through this emergency ordinance, that if someone wanted to modify their premises, they couldn't come to us for that approval. If we make it to where this is only new licenses and, and we have allow for modifications, transfers and renewals, then someone that wants to modify could come to our board and ask for that request.
I mean, I'm fine with people asking for modifications.
And they typically would need a modification of their special use permit as well. So that's going to keep zoning.
So it's still the board's decision on whether that to, to allow the modification. So just to clarify the motion, and if the second still stands, it's to approve ordinance number six pertaining to new medical and new retail marijuana establishments. So therefore it would allow renewals, transfers and modification of premises. Is that what your motion is? A.J., and your second stands, Ellen?
Yes.
Comments Pam?
So how many odor related tickets, fines, whatever we call them, have we issued?
I don't think there's any, been any fines. There's been follow-ups on getting filters fixed, um, that type of thing, but there hasn't been enforcement actions beyond that.
So we have not performed a single painful enforcement on anyone, although we still hear to the point where we're contemplating an emergency ordinance, complaints about odor.
Well, I don't know if our regulations as they are written, I mean, we do have enforcement provisions, but a lot of times staff will go out there, the folks will change their filters and then be in compliance. For however long they're in compliance is up to, you know, the owner of the nose, so to speak.
Well, hopefully we are to the point with repeat complaint establishments that we pick up the phone, answer the call, hang the phone up and go directly over there.
I think.
Is that the case?
Yeah, they do.
Okay. And so then, then if there's an issue, we should be at this point in time issuing some fines.
We, I don't think we've had more than one repeat offender in the entire town during any enforcement action.
But we have complaints from folks.
But that was different. I mean, for, when we were contemplating changing our regulations and those business owners came and took the time to come in and say, this is an untenable situation, whatever's going on is not working for us, is very different than picking up the phone every day and saying, I'm losing clients, it smells bad and how do we figure out where, where it goes? I mean, that's the, the issue as, as we received it last week. And part of it, I think it's going to be incumbent upon this board to make the regulations be in place that we are willing to pull someone's license. Cause staff is responding to those complaints as they receive them, but we also have other situations at play where we have business owners that are sensitive to what's going on and they feel like there's leasable space in their building and they're just going to keep coming and coming and coming. And so this to me is more of a timeout to say, let's clean up some of our regs and then re-lease it again. It, it was pretty powerful last week that people waited to come in and also knowing, the hard thing is, is other property owners have taken upon themselves to, to prohibit these types of businesses. And when you have a, a multi-tenant facility such as this, that's in an, has traditionally been an affordable professional building to have space, I don't want them to have to spend attorney's fees to then exclude these types of businesses when we can take a timeout and see if it works.
I don't disagree at all with their, the nature of their complaints. It's totally substantial as far as I'm concerned. I just don't think that this route is all that effective towards trying to get them a solution. The solution to me should be if it's continuing to be a persistent problem, we start enforcement and writing some fines and I think it would be somewhat like speeding tickets, you know, you curb your behavior pretty darn fast. And, and I, I mean, I wonder now that the 400 foot rule is in effect, how many folks today could move into this neighborhood without this ordinance, without this, I want to say prohibition, but I know that's not the right word.
Moratorium.
Moratorium. Given the, the, I mean, we're pretty close to our caps and I can't imagine too many more establishments could go either into 11101 Village or that buggy circle place. And meanwhile, you know, the school is gone from over here and now we've got this huge, fairly accurately zoned place to do this that is not being taken advantage of. So I don't, I mean, I just think it, it's a bit of a reach on developing entities who might want to pursue that for six months, trying to get a fix for these people in a different area. The nexus doesn't work.
Thanks Pam. Ellen and Katrina and then I saw Jay having.
So, um, you know, one thing I think to just to, um, part of, part of this kind of, and my thinking of this is, you know, there, there is actually, I don't think the 400 foot rule between retail establishments applies anywhere except on Main Street.
Correct.
So in fact, another retail marijuana shop and it's been contemplated could go into 1101. 1101 Village. And, and, and...
Well, then maybe that's more appropriate extension.
So, so the, by, but, you know, there was also a whole list of, of kind of ideas for, you know, kind of looking at this. And, and really, I think part of the emergency ordinance is to provide, to make it so it doesn't get worse in that building and make the problem bigger. And, 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 and part of it is, you know, I, I hear from other, other tenants or other, other businesses outside of that building about the smell in that neighborhood. So it's not, it's not just that building. It's, it's just kind of that, that neighborhood's been impacted. So how do we put in regulations that will really let us do some real enforcement? How do we, how do we expand kind of the way we can look at a license proposal and, and decide whether it's appropriate in a place? And we aren't stopping business. I mean, Carbondale has been extremely thinly. It's been probably the friendliest community in the entire region, and maybe on the western slope to marijuana businesses. And to take, take a, several months, up to six-month break to take a look at our regulations and ask ourselves what's working and what's not, and then look at kind of some opportunities for, for having these discussions elsewhere so that, you know, these concentrations don't occur in ways that affect other businesses in other places. And, and I, you know, I know that the Folk Rod property or the CDLLC property is, is open. Is that within 400, is that within the distance of the new Lutheran preschool?
Not all of it.
Not all of it. So some of it is.
Perhaps not, yeah, I mean, not much of it.
So anyway, that commercial area over there is affected. And, so I, I don't know. I just, I just would, I just would really like, you know, I don't think Carbondale's marijuana unfriendly. I think we're marijuana-friendly. I just think we need to take time. I'd, I'd like to make it so that things don't get worse in a place where, where the people are saying it's, it's affecting their business. And why should those business owners not be treated with the same kind of respect in terms of these regulations and, and this, this kind of new business as we give to the marijuana business? I mean, I, I think, you know, the vet who is here is probably one of the most popular vets in the valley. I mean, are we, are we willing to risk that business leaving because we've got principles around whether an emergency ordinance is appropriate or whether we've been friendly enough or not to marijuana? I mean, we've been very friendly to marijuana. And, and I think we absorb, we absorb businesses that could go elsewhere in the valley and maybe if more appropriate elsewhere in the valley because other, other jurisdictions won't accept them. And, and I, I think it's, it's incumbent on us as a town to factor that into our decision about how we regulate and manage this industry. So that's my thought.
Thanks. Ellen, Katrina, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I, I respect the thinking about this. You know, I think it is good to sort of take space to consider, you know, the, the impacts that are resulting out of how we've sort of oriented ourselves with this industry, which I do think has been very progressive considering the county we live in. You know, we're sort of unique in that way. And...
On this topic or others?
All the topics.
I, I, and I agree completely that, that we need to have fierce fines and for those to be way more automatic. Like, if your dog gets out, you get the ticket. There's no, like, they're so serious about it. And so I think, you know, bringing that into play immediately, you know, when we talk about it on the, the 13th, or, or just so that the offending businesses know that if a month from now they're still stinking up the building, that they're going to have to pay a lot of money.
A week. I mean, we wrote those pretty diligently, I thought.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm interested to see how, you know, to take a look at how it is relating to what we've asked, you know, where, where the failure is and between what we're asking and who's, how they're complying and how, what the disincentive is. You know, I think fines can be really powerful if they're, they're appropriate. And I am concerned that this doesn't address the problem in this building, and that is worrisome for exactly the reasons that you're highlighting, that we don't want to lose these longstanding committed businesses because we're also allowing a new business that is having impacts that aren't compatible, you know. I, and I'm not sure what that is and what maybe, you know, for me, maybe a more appropriate thing seems like, you know, an emergency ordinance that is, is the spacing requirement that extends over there. I mean, I, I, for some reason, thought that that was going to be protected from, from that spacing ordinance, but maybe I was transposing that on the caps, that the capsule...
The spacing was on the grows, not some, and then the Main Street retail, but not some of the ancillary things.
Sure. So an expansion of the caps or something. I mean, I, I wouldn't like to see, you know, yet another business go into that, that building before we're mitigating problems that are already there. And if this is really the only tool to do that, I, I feel like that's fair. I just feel like it's this, a whole-town moratorium and ordinance to deal with a problem in a single building. And that doesn't feel, it, it doesn't feel direct or, or specific enough to the problem. I'd rather, like, address the problem specifically and give relief to the businesses that are, are in there. So I think I had one more thing. Sorry, my thing closed. Yeah. And I, you know, I just agree completely with wanting to give the, the same respect and, and protectiveness to all other forms of business, you know. But I, but I do feel like we're, we're sort of using the shotgun where we need to just kind of hone in on, on a specific problem, you know. Doing this, this broad envelope feels a little disconcerting. And, you know, this, this industry does take a tremendous amount of advanced planning and advanced investment. And so I don't know what there is out there right now in terms of people who are, are moving forward in that extensive licensure process and all, all of that kind of stuff. So, I mean, that is a consideration, but I, you know, I mean, I just, I feel like we have this in place because it was what the community wanted. And, and so, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not absolutely opposed to the moratorium. It just does feel like we're taking a, a broad action that isn't addressing the problem that we want to address, but is also having some, some consequences on businesses that aren't related to that specific problem, maybe.
Thanks, Katrina. Ellen, I did see your hand up. Jay, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I clarified the spacing thing.
Okay, great.
Well, I just want to say that the townwide, you know, when I, when I made the proposal to make it townwide is, is one, is primarily it was, you know, do you, if you, if you just look, to stop it in this neighborhood, does that just kind of start to push, you know, a problem elsewhere into another neighborhood? So let's look at the whole town. Let's look at where it's, it's, it's working now, what's opening up, you know, where businesses are starting to relocate and kind of think, be able to think about it kind of in a townwide thing. We're not that big. And, and for me, it wasn't just this building, but it was this neighborhood. And I, and I think that, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty fearful of the, the Buggy Works Grove that's going in there. It is massive. It is, it is next to, you know, the, the car wash. It is next to the, it's close enough to the, to the, to the Heritage Park that they may, if it's not done right, fear, have effects. And, you know, I, I, you know, so I, I think this is kind of a neighborhood issue for this part of town. And, and when I thought about this ordinance, I said, well, let's make it townwide. Let's take a break. Let's look what's happening all over town and adjust our, our rules and take it from there. So, and then open it back up. It's not like it's a ban. It's just a moratorium.
And some other things, too. I mean, we do have a motion on the floor, and we can keep taking comments, but the sooner we can get at this on April 13th and, and go, start with Allison's note that she's already outlined for us and we reviewed prior for our other meeting, previously for our other meeting. And then also, if there's other issues that we need to make happen, the sooner we can, if this should pass tonight, we can have those things in place. One of the things that is hard for me, because I, I don't recall voting for emergency ordinances previously and thought them pretty hard, was that the, when you look at the, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and I don't think our current regulations have gone far enough. I, I'm supportive of us allowing these businesses to thrive and to be part of this emerging industry, but the cap, I think we were thinking we were being kind of conservative at five. And I, for one, don't think that we need to grow enough marijuana for every man, woman, and child in the 81623 zip code, you know, three times over every year to really make...
How would we ever know how much that is?
Well, I mean, if you talk to a few folks, I have a pretty round working number, depending on the usage. And so that's what, what was kind of alarming to me with some of the grows. So I am supportive in this instance, but I also understand board members' trepidation of not wanting to pass it. John? We have a motion on the floor, so we won't take public comment.
No, okay.
But I think we...
Yeah, we're going to keep out four.
Comment before the night's over.
That's fine.
I'm just pointing out, we're keeping out four cultivations and four medical retail stores or, or stores and, and one MIP, and some MIP that would probably go into the building and add to the problem, but...
And we'll see where the vote is. We need five votes to enact this emergency ordinance. We may, we may or may not get there.
I just want to say quickly, I am not going to support this, but I will support a moratorium of some kind on extending that distance that we afforded downtown to everywhere else. And, and I would think, I mean, I think, anyway, that's what I would do instead of this.
Okay. So there's a motion by A.J. Do you have another comment?
Yeah. I mean, I, I feel that same way, that I would rather protect this, this building and maybe apply those distances rather than this, but...
We'd have to extend it to MIPS as well, then.
That's, to all of it.
MIPS and grows. And, well, I don't know, but it doesn't always make sense to have, to, to, you know, these products, stuff, you know, can go side by side in a way that, you know, maybe stores can. I don't know. It's, like I said, it's a bigger thing. I just kind of wanted to slow it all down for a while.
Yeah, and that...
Take a look at everything and then, and then go forward. So...
Yeah, I just was...
We vote now, we vote now.
Right. I was just more supportive of the timeout and then figuring out the details and, and hopefully lifting it quickly so we can move forward. Because wasting precious agenda time discussing it, it's like herding cats all over again. So there's a motion on the floor by A.J. with the change on ordinance number six for licensing of new medical and new retail marijuana establishments. There's a second by Ellen.
And MIPS and labs, right?
Well, yeah, it's all marijuana establishments.
All new licenses.
All new licenses, yeah. Any other further comment? Kathy, would you please call roll?
Ellen Harvey?
Yes.
Pam Zentmeyer?
No.
A.J. Hobbs?
Yes.
John Hoffman?
No.
Katrina Byers?
No.
Stacy Bernat?
Yes. So that motion fails 3-3 on the emergency ordinance. Are there any other motions that are, that people would like to put forth tonight?
I don't know how to articulate it, but I would put a motion forward that we extend the boundaries throughout town that we have graced Main Street with and grow facilities distance.
On an emergency basis. I mean, we don't have...
Yeah. I mean, that gets more to the point for these folks than anything else does. And at the same time, I'd like to see a, a log of how many complaints have been made from, from this building, when the response was, when the physical response was addressed and what the conclusion was.
None until the public...
Yeah, we didn't have, and staff went out of...
Someone has phoned in the building department to go over there and investigate an odor offense.
I disagree with that. I called many times. Cindy has called. I'm sorry.
No, that's, it's fine.
We have a log, we have a log of every...
It took John two hours to come. My end smell is gone. What good is it then?
John gives me every, if there's a complaint and he goes over there and he finds that there is...
Verified.
Yeah, verified. Then I, I get a copy of that. And if he goes over to a place and there is no...
The water's way out. It's gone.
Then we don't get a copy of it.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean there wasn't a complaint.
Yep.
We don't have an emergency response. If someone else is going on, we don't have people that's there.
No, but we're not logging complaints.
Yeah, we need to log complaints.
We're not logging complaints.
I know, we are.
We're logging verified complaints.
No, we put a file of both.
He has both, but he only gives me verified complaints.
Right.
For their, for their marijuana file.
Part of the problem, Pam, I think with an emergency ordinance extending a 400-foot rule is that, in fact, there may be appropriate businesses side by side within. Are we extending so that every marijuana business has to be 400 feet from any other marijuana business? Does a grow have to be 400 feet away from a retail establishment? I, you know, I think, so I think, I think what we just do is we live with our existing stuff, and hopefully those folks won't get more businesses in there, and we, you know, work on our ordinance. I mean, the only other emergency, John, can you hold on a second, please? The only other emergency would be to maybe do one for that neighborhood and do an emergency ordinance to disallow any application, new, new licenses.
Is that...
I'll second that.
Is that allowed, Mark?
I'm sorry, I was...
To neighborhoods specify a moratorium on a neighborhood?
Probably, but if you're looking to take action tonight, I sure want to put something in writing and have it back when we all know what we're talking about.
That'll be April 13th.
Well, I'm all for that. I mean, I just want to get these people some legitimate relief today, not in six months.
That's what we were just trying to do.
But, but what you were talking about doing is not going to get them relief.
It's not going to...
Yeah, it is. It's going to, it's going to stop the...
It's going to stop any new businesses...
Stop new businesses from getting worse. So it's going to stop it from getting worse, and we're going to take the time to look at ways to find relief.
And do this right instead of spending an hour on doing it tonight when we're doing it April 13th.
It, it doesn't address the air circulation system within their building.
That's what we can address April 13th, and this gives us time to breathe, protects them who have, we've tried to protect multiple times and haven't with piecemeal rules.
Yeah. So the...
We don't have piecemeal rules.
The ability to have an emergency ordinance, I think, has passed because I, for one, would not support without having the document in front of us. I mean, it just, I understand the intent. I was supportive of taking the timeout. We'll take this topic back up on the 13th. And, you know, Allison provided us with a pretty in-depth memo that we had for last week, so we'll start from there on the 13th. And if there are additional items that we want to add to that for our regulations, I think let's take a look at that and do that then. So thanks everybody for your time. This meeting's adjourned. I apologize for it going to a later hour than anticipated.
Can we have on the 13th, I would like a record of calls.
We have a lot of calls, verified ones. Everything gets put in two different files.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and turn it off, yeah.
And in some cases, there's been complaints in one spot where verification is for a different property.
Sure, because of winds. But I, I just want perspective on what's going on.